Nadla Hessler-Ton Guahan is called to order. Can I ask if Senator Chris Duñez, you lead us in the prayer?
Shall we rise to pray? Thank you. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity as public servants to gather here to debate on serious issues that pertain to our island and our people. We ask, Lord, that as we debate these issues, that we do so with respect, with consideration for one another, and each his own opinion and feelings. But at the end, Lord, we also ask that you give us your wisdom, so that in the end, we truly do what's in the best interest of the common good for all of our people, Lord God. I ask that you put a special blessing on all of us, to include our speaker and all members, to have understanding and patience with one another. And, Lord, we ask also that the rest of the public, as they watch this process, that they also understand as we deliberate on these key provisions, Lord God. So Jesus, keep us all safe and deliberating great, Lord God, for the work of our people. In Jesus' name we pray. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of Inefresi, Senator Munia Barnes, can you lead us?
Yes, my colleagues can join me.
And Senator Silver Tyeran, if you can lead us in the Guam hymn in Chamorro, and Senator Judy Guthers in the singing of the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see, like the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose starstruck and bright stars through the perilous line? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the horn's bursting roar, gave proof to the night that our flag was still in. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much, Senators. Ask the clerk to please take a roll call.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthers. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyeran. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, I wish to report there is a form present.
Senator Rispicio, I'm going to excuse saying of two of our members.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning. I move to excuse Speaker Panglinen and Minority Leader Blas from today's session.
Without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, on item seven, I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated March 12 through the 21st, 2012, subject to correction.
That motion, without objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that it be appended to today's session Journal.
No objections, so ordered.
There are messages from Imagalang Guahan, and I move that they also be appended to today's session Journal.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are reports of standing committees, and I move for the same.
No objections, so ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees, and under introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that Bill Number 439-31COR to 448-31 be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also move that Resolution 372-31 to 380-31 also be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
And I move for certificate numbers 122-31 to 130-31 be given its first reading as well.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My first motion is that any resolution that's introduced for the duration of this session, if it's commensory or condolence in nature, that it be automatically adopted by this body, that all senators be cosponsors, and that the author work with the clerk and the legislative council in the preparation of these documents.
Objections, so ordered.
My next motion, Madam Speaker, is notwithstanding its customary that in the event where in the second reading file, and we are in the bill, and the sponsor for some reason is not, needs additional time, or there may be some questions or documents pending, that that bill be set aside. It doesn't lose its place on the agenda, just be set aside, and the sponsor advise you when they're ready to come back to that bill.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I don't have any other motions at this time, but I think it's most appropriate at this time to mention that the administration, Governor Cabo, has transmitted a bill to you, his version of election reform, and so rather than saying no immediately to that idea, I'm going to request that we have an opportunity to review it before making any override attempt on Bill 413, and the clerk has made a PDF file of that bill, and that it's being circulated, and that Senator Rodriguez, as Chair of the Election Reform, also be having, have an opportunity to review that as well. So I'm not going to make that motion at this time, and also, you wanted every single member of the legislature to be present for that very important effort. So, Madam Speaker, under legislative concurrence, I move then from the Committee on Utilities, Transportation, Public Works, Veterans Affairs, on the appointment of Ms. Lucy Alcorn to serve as a member of the A.B. Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors, with Senator Addis, Tom Addis' recommendation to confirm, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
From the same committee, on the appointment of Mr. Martin J. Gerber to the same board, with Senator Tom Addis' committee's recommendation to confirm, I also move that that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and from the Committee on, same committee, I don't, on the appointment of Ms. Monica Guzman, I don't think that committee heard that appointment. It was the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Vice Speaker's Committee, so this clerk should notate that this agenda's not accurate. To serve as a member of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency Board, with Vice Speaker Cruz's recommend, Committee's recommendation to confirm, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are no other motions at this time.
So we are then now on the second reading file, and the first bill on the agenda is substitute bill Number 60-31. I recognize the author, Senator Silva Tyeran.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning. I'd like to make a motion to move this to the third reading file for the purpose of discussion.
Yes, you may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 60 essentially will make it illegal to carry any passengers in the bed of a pickup truck. The hazards of riding in the cargo areas have been addressed by various laws in 30 states and in the District of Columbia, and this legislation follows recommendations of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. As I've repeatedly stated over the last year since this bill's been introduced, the beds of pickup trucks are designed for cargo and definitely not for people. They are not designed to provide any sort of protection in a crash, and people, most especially minors, can be easily ejected from the beds of the pickup truck that's traveling even at low rates of speed. If a sudden stop or sharp turn is made to avoid an obstacle or crash, this may result in serious injuries or worse. During the first public hearing, this bill received support from the Guam Police Department, the Guam Fire Department, the Department of Public Works, the Office of the Attorney General, and other members of the public. These same agencies reinforced their support of, at a subsequent markup hearing. Madam Speaker, I would like the community to look at this merely as a safety issue and nothing else. The legislature has touted itself as being proponents for safety. Just recently, we passed a bill that bans the use of cellphones while driving on our roadways, and yet another bill that requires the use of helmets while using a bicycle. We must continue the efforts to keep our people safe. As a representative for the people, I am responsible for ensuring that laws are in place to keep our people safe, and while I do acknowledge that riding in the back of a truck is common on Guam, we need to ensure the safety of all our people is paramount. So I do look forward to a healthy discussion on this, and I do ask my colleagues for support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion, recognize Senator Tom Adda.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Fortunately, I find it difficult to support Bill 60-31, simply because although I certainly acknowledge the objective of the author in trying to promote safety on our highways, I think in doing so, we've also got to strike a balance between really what is pragmatic and the ideal solution to at least the accidents that we've had with people riding in the back of a pickup truck. I think that certainly back in the mainland, you know, in urban settings where speed is certainly is a lot higher than what we have here on Guam, I certainly would agree that passengers in the back of a pickup truck certainly would be in a very unsafe situation. But I think here on Guam, if people followed the speed limit, I think riding in the back of a pickup truck may be acceptable to some extent. But we also got to really take a look at the practical side of why we currently allow people to ride in the back of a pickup truck. For many people, you know, you can buy a pickup truck for less than $20,000 and be able to carry your family around. And certainly, if you have a family with more than three children, you're not going to be able to carry them in that vehicle and make it all in one trip. But it's very common here where the people who ride in the back of a pickup truck, that is their means of transportation. It is not just a utility vehicle to carry cargo and other commodities in the back of the pickup truck. It is actually a way of transporting people. I think this, trying to strike this balance between the ideal to achieving safety, or at least that one more effort at promoting safety on our highways, I think we've tried to strike that balance in the earlier law that was passed, which is now being deleted. And we've basically said in the earlier law that you can have passengers in the back of the pickup truck when all the seating spaces have been exhausted in the cab of the pickup truck. We've also limited the age, I believe it's, nobody below the age of 12 years old will be allowed to sit in the back of the truck. We've limited the number of people that can ride in the back of a pickup truck to five, whereas before, we had situations, particularly with construction companies, where they would load up all their construction equipment and load in as many laborers as they can in the back of a pickup truck, making for a very dangerous situation. We've also put in the parameters where a pickup truck must be, must have a cab if you're going to have people riding in the back, must have, must be on all four sides, have a side that's at least, I believe, two and a half, I believe it's two and a half or 24 or 36 inches high, so that it does provide protection. The previous law also prohibited the, what was very common, especially amongst teenagers, to sit on the railing of the truck. So I think we've done a lot to try and make, you know, using the pickup truck as a means of transportation as safe as we possibly could. Of course, unfortunately, you know, you can't legislate against stupidity, so, you know, if you're going to put people in the back of the pickup truck, and then that driver's going to drive at 60 miles an hour, and increasing the chances of getting into a collision or going off-roading, then obviously, there's, no amount of legislation can legislate against that sort of thing. So I think in this case, inasmuch as, as I certainly am a proponent for promoting safety on our highways, I think we always got to strike that balance between pragmatics and the ideal solution to safety on our highways. So with that, Madam Speaker, I certainly cannot support Bill 60-31. Thank you.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion, recognize Senator Munia Barnes.
Sitos Mossi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do want to say that when we had the public hearing on this bill, we were present, and some of the concerns, there was a number of support for the bill. There were also some concerns that came up, and one question that I had posed to the panel that was there was if the truck was retrofitted to include what they call nowadays the camper shells that would provide a covering for the back of the bed, would that still be not allowable for passengers to ride on the back of a bed that has been retrofitted to include that camper shell? So I guess that would be one of my first questions, was if a truck was retrofitted to add a camper, it's either a camper or a shell to enclose the back of the bed, will it then be allowable for a person to ride in the back of a retrofitted bed?
Would you want to address the question to Senator Tyeran? Senator, do you yield to the question?
Not according to this measure, as I see it, the camper shell doesn't provide any sort of restraint, so, but it could be, there are mechanisms that could be made retrofitting, retrofitting your vehicle so that bucket seats can be put in there with adequate seat belts and restraints, but as far as I know, camper shells don't provide any sort of restraint. Should a vehicle be hit and passengers in the rear of the vehicle, they would still be bounced around, and it still would not be safe.
Senator?
Does that answer?
Yeah, so I guess the answer is no.
But amendments, I mean, I would be willing to make amendments to allow for the retrofitting of vehicles so that adequate safety is provided to those people who are riding in the back of a pickup truck on seats that are put in place in vehicles.
I appreciate it, and Madam Speaker, I do know that when the previous, when the retiring speaker had introduced legislation to this bill, a lot of those same concerns were brought up. The breakdown of what was provided in the law that exists today explicitly says that there are certain requirements why or how a person can ride on the back of the bed, and we've included that as an august body. I do want to share with you that in that same public hearing, well, not on the same public hearing, I guess it was a month later, there were some concerns from the mayors, and as oversight of mayors, I'd be remiss if I at least didn't note this for the record. Some of the questions or concerns that they brought up in reference to this bill that prohibiting vehicle passengers from riding in the back of the bed, they found out that first and foremost, 17 out of 18 mayors and vice-mayors in attendance to that last meeting had voted no, and they stated, they stated a lot of their objections, and if I may, Madam Speaker, I just want to just bring it up on the floor. The following concerns that were brought up, and perhaps could be discussed on this floor, was the number, one, the number of facilities of passengers being thrown from the pickup truck in the past 10 years is minuscule compared to the facilities of regular passenger vehicles, and I guess the mayors had concerns because they had checked with GPD on that issue, and as far as, as the data that was compiled by GPD for this measure. Another concern that was brought up is the problem is not necessarily passengers riding in the back of the pickup truck, but the enforcement of existing laws regulating passengers in the back of the pickup truck. And as the good speaker from Mingila Baragada spoke about, that those regulations are in place today. Three, all mayoral offices are involved in the court mandated community service programs. At present time, offices are not equipped with transport vans to accommodate the groups' community service workers that are sent to the mayor's offices every week to do community work, to whether it be clean the villages, or to do work for community work hours for services to the village mayors. The other concern was, that they had spoken about was, many of the village roads are only at the 25 mile per hour speed limits, and the use of pickup trucks by many of our residents is obvious, not only because of price, but it's more economical and useful. Families who cannot afford passenger vehicles but have more than six in the family will now be hard pressed to do transporting, especially with, to do more transporting, especially with the cost of fuels at the present time. And then the other thing that was brought up was how will residents be able to reach their ranch or their beach property that require four-wheel drive with their families if they're not allowed to transport them in the beds of their trucks when cars cannot be driven on such terrain? I only bring this up, Madam Speaker, and I know the intent of the author of this legislation is sincere in wanting to make sure that the protocols and the safeguards in place. I'd also be remiss if I didn't share another perspective where I myself was a cosponsor of a bill to add for the safety and protection of drivers on our roadways who use motorcycles to have them wear a helmet, and, Madam Speaker, you know that that legislation caused a lot of controversy within our community, and I respect and acknowledge the author's intent of this bill, but I do know that as oversight of mayors, I have to at least bring their concerns up to the forefront, because you and I know that the limited resources that our mayors have, any little chance they can get from point A to point B will cost resources that we don't have. And that was one major concern that several of the mayors brought up to me, saying, how are we going to do that? Another thing that was brought up was families within the southern villages use this transportation, the truck, and according to them, they say, you know, they follow the rules and regs, they don't let the kids in the back. I really thought it was 14, now that I hear that it's 12. I myself don't let anybody under 14 in the back of the truck, because we've seen, you know, some accidents to that effect, but that's for the kids. Now with the adults, I would assume that there would be a little bit more common sense on how they would sit and know that there are violations that are already existing today if they abuse the sitting in the back of the bed. So with that being said, Madam Speaker, I still would like to listen to all the concerns. I'm hoping that maybe some of my colleagues who wish to speak on this would also help me try and answer the concerns from the mayors, and seeing what we could do to at least address the intent of the author, because I know that her intent is sincere, and that we do have some existing laws in place, and maybe if we even strengthen those or add more penalties for those who violate what exists today, then maybe that can also be looked at. So I will continue to sit, intently to hear, and also maybe put in an amendment to, if you can give me that opportunity, Madam Speaker, so I can check with legal counsel to see what I can do with the amendment in as far as retrofitting for the utilization of shells on the back of a truck that is manufactured standard, and shells and camper shells are to protect the bed of the truck are not included in the manufacture of the vehicle. So if you can give me that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Once you're ready with your amendment, I'll come back to you. On the motion, Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of Bill Number 60-31. I appreciate all the information that has been voiced and repeated from the public hearing to today. There's no doubt that every member in this body wants to do what's right, big-picture-wise for our island. I speak from a perspective of what I see and what I witness every day that I'm in my truck. And what I see oftentimes, whether it's in the morning, or at nighttime, or middle of the day, weekends, are families in trucks. I see, I can't tell if they're 12, I don't know that, but I do trust parents that they are law-abiding family members, but I see kids in trucks, sitting in the back. Many times, it's really hot, many times it's raining, but they're there, because that is a mode of transportation. And then many times, particularly early in the morning, I'll see many construction workers crammed in the bed of a truck, and again, that's their mode of transportation, and they've got a job site to go to, and they go, and it always strikes me that that's the way they have to get to where they need to get. But I don't think it's necessarily right. I don't think that those kids should be in the back of the trucks. I don't think those construction workers should be huddled like cargo in the back of a truck. And while I do respect businesses for making their decisions, what's cost-effective, what works, I do become very concerned about families when they're thinking they have no other choice. So I keep looking forward to our mass transit system getting better and better. I know we have a senator working hard on that, to where more and more of us won't have to drive cars or trucks, or we can take the mass transit system and save our environment all the way around. Madam Speaker, we have lots of road construction happening today, and apparently, it's going to be happening for quite a few more years. So as we- So as we learn where the road is shut off, or closed, or where we have to merge, many of us read the paper, and we can understand the diagrams, and truthfully, many people don't read the paper. Many people don't listen to the radio, and many people don't watch the news, they just don't. So I watch people trying to look ahead and figure out where they have to merge. I watch people literally getting angry because somebody else has cut them off. I hear more and more horns being pounded upon or leaned upon because the road rage is increasing. And I always pray that people will just calm down and understand that the road construction really isn't our best interest, and we just need to be patient. But many of these vehicles traveling the roads that are being constructed, the roads that those lanes are merging, the places, Eric and I go around the island frequently, we see where the bridges still need to be fixed, we know where we have to stop, and I watch the truckloads of our families stopping, sometimes suddenly, sometimes not suddenly, but I always worry, because it doesn't take an awful lot for the pickup to hit something and for something to fly. We've had all kinds of unfortunate tragedies, and anything that we can to limit that, and I agree that we can outlaw idiocy. I think many of us would have already introduced a measure if we were able to do that. We're not able to do that. But what I think we can do is put policies in place that would help our families make better decisions. I do agree that it may impact our businesses, and so I offer an amendment that the enactment of this measure, on page three, says that the provisions of this act shall become effective thirty days upon enactment. Madam Speaker, I'm offering amendment that the provisions of this act shall become effective one year upon enactment, and I think one year would give enough time for businesses to relook at schedules, reconsider how to get their manpower or their human capital safely to their work sites, and to reconsider the budget, and how, or buying more trucks, or buying a bus, a van, instead of the trucks. And then the truck is for the equipment, so that they can transport what they need to get to those work sites. I have gotten phone calls, Madam Speaker, from teachers and principals, saying that, asking me not to support this, because they see that the kids are really, that's the way they're transported. And if we pass this, and that's really hurting the families and getting their children to school. And I've listened to them. But in the bigger scope of the safety issue, Madam Speaker, I think, I think putting these kind of safety structures in place really isn't the best interest of those twelve-year-olds, thirteen-year-olds, fourteen-year-olds, sixteen-year-olds, seventeen-year-olds, eighteen-year-olds getting from home to school. I think physically, socially, and emotionally, when I've talked to kids who used to be taken to school in the truck, and it was always mom, grandma, granddad, can you just drop me off at the corner and I'll walk in? It's all of those kinds of issues. And, you know, suck it up, get over it, that's just what we are, shouldn't be embarrassed, this is what we have to offer. I understand all of that. But I go back to the sponsors' main reason for doing this, and that is really for the safety of the family. So I too look forward to deeper deliberation of this whole issue, which really does impact our island, and how we move, how we treat and respect our family members and our businesses, and how we're going to collectively ensure that our roadways are safe as we move forward. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the Yamashita amendment, on page three, line eighteen, to delete thirty days and increase it to one year. On the amendment, no objection, so ordered. On the motion, I recognize Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with respect to the author, I must rise in opposition of Bill Sixty, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the current law was passed less than three years ago. This is a very significant improvement from the time when there was just no law at all. Bill Sixty proposes to draw away with all those features of safety that would ensure that whoever is riding at the back of a pickup truck is safe. And I do not believe, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, there is no evidence right now to suggest that the current law is not adequate. There's no evidence. I mean, it's nice to have, to just exempt, or rather prohibit, everybody from riding at the back of a pickup truck if you want to achieve absolute, 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 hundred percent safety, but it does not mean that the current law does not provide safety. And I bring your attention, Madam Speaker. Currently, passengers riding in the bed are exempted from the seatbelt requirement, provided, provided, and I look at page two, because these are the things, these are the safety features that Bill Sixty proposes to do away, provided that the bed of a pickup truck is surrounded by all four sides by a secured vertical body extension inclusive of a tailgate that is at least fourteen inches high. Less than three years ago, there was no such, there was no such restriction. It was an open bed. On number two, all seat belts, all seats in the cab of a pickup truck are occupied by a passenger. Before there was none, I mean, there could be a driver alone at the front, and everybody is at the back. With the new law that's existing now, all the front seats must first be occupied. On number three, passengers in the bed of a truck are twelve years old. Again, prior to three years ago, there was just no restriction. A baby can be at the backside, at the back of a pickup truck. Now, it should not be less than twelve years old. So there is the balance, there is the recognition. Passengers, on number four, passengers of a pickup truck remain seated on the floor. Prior to three years ago, there was no such restriction. A person can be standing and holding onto the hood and get that fresh air blowing through the wind. There was no such thing anymore. The current law also provides that passengers are not leaning against the tailgate. Three years ago, there's no restriction. Now, these are the safety features, Madam Speaker, that less than three years ago were built into that, from no law at all to this, and this is less than three years ago. And then, of course, provided, on the last exemption, the last exemption, provided that there's not more than five passengers on the backside of the pickup truck. Again, less than three years ago, there was no restriction, it could be overloaded. And I say again, Madam Speaker, that Bill Sixty proposes to draw away with all of this, and to provide for only two exemptions. And the exemptions are on the backside, and on page three, and it says, a no driver of a pickup truck, as defined, shall be in violation if the pickup truck being driven is participating in an annual parade. That is included in the current law, that is recognized in the current law. And again, it says that the second exemption is that the passenger has a vehicle limitation or medical condition that is properly documented, that the doctors, the certification say this must be carried on the back of a pickup truck, that is the other exception, no other exception. So we're talking here about almost zero tolerance. At a place and a culture where a pickup truck is actually tied to the economics of that family, and now to not allow a more efficient use of the bed of the pickup truck, even for just two passengers, is overburdening the owner of the pickup truck. And again, while safety is a concern, there is no evidence right now, Madam Speaker, to suggest that the current safety features build into the current law. And if you read page two, all those striking lines are the current law, and read those if those are not adequate. And that is the reason why I rise in opposition of Bill Sixty, because it will not enhance the safety. The current regulations is more than adequate, and it provides a balance between safety and free choice of the owner of the vehicle that ties that vehicle, that investment, into the economics of his life. And I rise in opposition of Bill Sixty, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, I recognize Senator Guthertz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I want to commend the author of the bill for her intentions. I think she and everyone in this legislature wants to promote safety on the roads. And we've had some very sad situations occur when people have been seriously injured or who have passed away because of being ejected from the bed of a pickup truck because of lack of proper security measures in the truck. But I must join some of my colleagues and say that I'm very worried about the social impact of this bill, because if you look at the dynamics of the folks that we often find riding in the back of pickups, we're talking about folks that perhaps struggle hard to make ends meet, and don't have things like family cars, or SUVs, or vehicles of that nature. And they use the pickup as their family car. As a matter of fact, that might be a good promotion for ads by these car dealers, the Guam Family Car, the pickup truck, you know? Now, the other thing I want to talk about is if you really want to secure people in the pickup, then we can require seat belts. We can require seat belts in the back of pickups to be installed and to be worn by individuals who, out of necessity, sit in the back of pickups. As my colleague just said, there are already restrictions, aid restrictions, in terms of who, at what age, are not authorized to sit in the back of a pickup when the pickup is moving. Another element here is frankly, there are a lot of people that make their living moving goods and moving household things around the island using pickup trucks. And they sit in the back of the pickup to ensure the security of those items, or those furniture pieces, or cargoes. So we could in fact be putting people out of business who may not have the luxury of buying vans, covered tops and things like that, to be able to move goods around the island. So there's an economic impact to this. And the third point I want to say is that, you know, we have to find the balance between safety and the, I guess I'd like to call it the rights of people to take responsibility for themselves and their actions. And we might in fact be over-regulating, over-regulating in this particular instance. So, Madam Speaker, what I would like to do, and I'd like to ask the assistance of legal counsel, to make a motion to include in the bill, in some appropriate location, just the simple words, individuals riding in the back of a pickup must wear seat belts. In other words, they must be installed in the back of the pickup to ensure security. I think that would help a lot. And that way visually, our police officers could easily tell if in fact individuals are wearing seat belts in the back of the pickup, when they're riding in the back of the pickup. I think that would allow us to ally some of the safety issues, and to create that consciousness of people to be cautious when they're in the back of the pickup. So that would be my motion, Madam Speaker. And we give them, I agree with my colleague, give them a year to comply with the seatbelt requirement, because the vendors would have to bring them in, people would have to install them, and that way we have a reasonable accommodation without over-regulating, and at the same time recognizing the need for safety. Thank you very much.
So Senator, your amendment is individuals riding in the back of the truck must wear seat belts.
Yes, secured to the bed of the truck.
Secured. We have actually two amendments here with nothing yet in writing, so I'm going to take a brief recess to see if we can address those two before we move on. a brief recess to see if we can address those two before we move on.
Ten bills are coming now.
The legislature's back in session. Senator Guthers?
Well, I know, but Senator Duñez is next after Guthers, but I need to know what we're going to do with her amendment. We're going to withdraw. I have the evidence.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in the interest of moving the discussion forward, I could tell you firsthand that Senator Guthers is going to withdraw her amendment. I have the evidence to prove it.
All right.
So I move that the Guthers amendment be withdrawn regarding the seat belts for the back of the pickup truck.
All right.
No objection.
Senator Duñez, and then after Senator Duñez, who else wishes to be?
They'll come back to my minutes.
All right, will do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I rise in really the, to say that I completely understand the intention and really the very good intention of the author. But I have a feeling that what we're speaking about here, or what we're not speaking about here, is really one of the greater issues. And that's the problem we have with our public mass transit system. We've heard discussion on the floor now, which makes sense, that a pickup truck, even as was discussed, brand new, yes, you can get for less than $20,000. But a used pickup truck, you can get for a few thousand, which is really, I believe, the group of individuals that we're speaking about who just are not of the socioeconomic status to be able to afford a passenger vehicle to transport members of their family. I believe when it comes to businesses, Mr. Speaker, they have to comply and understand that part of doing business is safely transporting their people to and from the workplace. But when it comes to our people, especially with now gas prices at over $5 a gallon, it's truly understood that there are limitations. But once again, Mr. Speaker, I believe that what we're really talking about here is the lack of a true mass transit system that is reliable, that people can count on to get from point A to point B, whether it be for social functions, or for work, or even going to school for that matter. Mr. Speaker, there's a number of things on Guam that we have and do very well, and with our economy, multi-billion dollar economy, I believe there's no excuse for us to not have fixed this issue. So, Mr. Speaker, I would also like to address one other issue. And that is the issue of the concern about, from the mayors, and concern from people in general, when we're talking about transporting people within the villages. And as was discussed, there are some beach properties that are only accessed by four-wheel vehicles after other vehicles arriving at the beach property, and you need to move people in a pickup, a four-wheel drive pickup, to their beach property. And so I'd like to offer two amendments to the bill to address these issues that I've just discussed, Mr. Speaker. And that is, on page two, line 26, after pickup truck, it would be enroouted roadways? And that would mean the prohibition basically is on the highways of Guam. So that when you're having, when mayors are doing activities within the village where they need to transport their people, driving very slowly and securely within the village to do their village work, that that's not prohibited. And then when families go to the beach for an outing, and they have family property that's accessible only by a four-wheel pickup, that they could put multiple members of their family to slowly drive into their beach properties and other ranch properties, so that they don't, you know, have to not do that, basically, not be able. I've been to many beaches and ranches, Mr. Speaker, where I drove my car there, to where as far as the car could go, and then got in the back of a pickup to be able to go to the ranch or to go to the beach. So I would offer that amendment, Mr. Speaker, first.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. On the Duñez amendment to add enroouted roadways after pickup on line 26, any senator wish to be heard on the Duñez amendment? Any objection to the Duñez amendment? Seeing no objection?
And so my second, so my second amendment, Mr. Speaker, to address the issue that truly we must come to terms with working a little bit harder on improving our mass transit system. And we heard earlier, the good senator from Timouning moved from the 30 days to one year. And I think that's very sensible, so that we can sit down and work on these issues and work through these issues. I would also like to add an amendment, Mr. Speaker, on line 18 of section four, page three, after the one year upon enactment. And the further amendment would be, or to amend that would be, and a fully operational mass transit system on a 24-hour basis. And basically what this would do, Mr. Speaker, is say that we can do this, but we have to offer an alternative. We have to offer that in order to take away the capability of transporting our people by necessity in the back of a pickup truck, there is an affordable alternative. And so, Mr. Speaker, I offer that amendment as well.
On the second Duñez amendment, and a fully operational mass transit system on a 24-hour basis, is there any objection to this amendment, or any senator wish to be heard on that amendment? I see Senator Guthers' hand up. Any others? Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the senator. I'm the senator, Speaker. You know what? When I heard that part regarding the bus, it reminded me of years ago. And I'm bothered by it. Because now we're telling people who probably can't afford to have a family vehicle with a top and four doors, et cetera, well, you can't ride in the back of your truck, but you can ride on the bus. That bothers me. We're really now affecting people's lifestyle, particularly based on their ability to afford certain things. People can only afford a pickup for their family, we're saying, you can't ride in the back of the pickup. And then we're also saying, well, because you can't ride in the back of the pickup, ride the bus. So I am very concerned about that, Mr. Speaker.
Any other senator wish to be heard? Is there an objection to the Duñez amendment, or any other senators? I see two objections from Senator Silva Tyran and Senator Guthers. There being an objection- There being an objection to the Duñez amendment, any other senator wish to be heard on it? There being an objection, all those in favor of the Duñez amendment, a fully operational mass transit system on a 24-hour basis, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Any -- the next, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized on your amendment.
Sisusmasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come back and just make two amendments to the bill. On page three, line 13, I would add a new subsection C.227102 to read. See, the pickup truck is under the jurisdiction of the mayors and vice-mayors and is being used in their official capacity. So that would fall under the exemption part, Mr. Speaker. And then the second one.
Hold on, hold on, let's take them one by one. There's one amendment by Senator Munia Barnes, an exemption for the mayors in official capacity within their villages.
And vice-mayors.
And vice-mayors.
No objection.
Any Senator Guthers?
Okay, we're going to make the exemption there. What about the safety of these rescue units?
Back of their pickups, securing their equipment, and what about when the rescue units go out to retrieve a deceased victim? And because of the difficulty of getting to the scene, they use a pickup truck and have to bring the deceased person back in the back of the pickup? What about those circumstances?
Do you wish to yield to that question, Senator Barnes?
Mr. Speaker, if I may, she can add an amendment to the amendment if she chooses to.
All right.
Yeah, I'm just -- my point is this, that...
I understand you were raising a question and so I think...
I'm just worried about exempting certain entities that need an exemption. We may be leaving other ones out, even beyond the public safety entities.
Okay, then I think her suggestion that if you want to make amendment, please do so. I see Senator Palacios' hand up. Did you have -- would you like to yield to that question and provide an -- no? Speak on the...
Well, I'm trying to suggest, Mr. Speaker, that maybe we need a generic statement that allows for this under certain conditions. And not just for the mayors and not just for public safety, but under certain extreme conditions. What if the Department of Agriculture has to move a carabao and they're using their pickup to do it? Someone has to stay in the back and tether the carabao. We talked about public safety, we talked about the mayors.
Do you have an amendment?
Well, I'd like to ask, if I may, legal counsel to help us develop a generic amendment for legitimate, justifiable reasons, not just for the mayors.
All right, then we'll allow you to have an opportunity with legal counsel to prepare an amendment. Senator Palacios, did you wish to speak on the...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I completely agree with the last speaker. There are agencies, the fire department and their rescue, probably they need to put that jet ski on the back of a truck and transport that across the, you know, on the road back to the rescue unit. There are the Guam Police Department, the customs and quarantine, they have evidence to load at the back, those bags on the backside, those cars would have to be -- this is getting complicated, Mr. Speaker. And without those, without satisfying those other conditions for those other agencies, I rise in opposition of the amendment. Thank you.
All right, there's opposition to the amendment offered by Senator Munia Barnes. Any other senator wish to be heard on the Munia Barnes amendment? There being opposition to the Munia Barnes amendment, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand.
Both of the amendments.
Yeah. All those in favor of the Munia Barnes amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Are we supposed to get to eight?
Yes.
I only count six. Seven. All right. The fails. Your second amendment. Senator Barnes, you're recognized for your second amendment.
Mr. Speaker, I know that first -- my first amendment didn't through, but I'm hoping that with the new amendment coming through that it'll include the mayors, as I think it's important that the mayors be included as government official and that they, as 24/7 responders to their village residents and they do all the work, that it is needed, their vehicle, their trucks are needed to transport from point A to point B. My second amendment, Mr. Speaker, if I may, is to add a new subsection, I guess C. right now, to section 27102 to read, and that, again, is the exemption clause that the pickup truck has been retrofitted with camper shell. That there's an exception, that if there's a camper shell that is utilized, which covers and keeps the passengers enclosed within the bed of the truck, then that it would allow for passengers to be in the back of the truck.
On the Munia Barnes amendment for the camper shell exemption, any senator wish to be heard on this amendment? I don't see any hands. Any objection to the Munia Barnes camper shell amendment? Is that in -- is that in -- oh, speak, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I was just, in our discussion in our break, I did have a question for Senator Barnes on whether or not we should include in that amendment the retrofitting or the bucket seats or any sort of seats that would require any -- some sort of restraint other than just the camper shell. So with her amendment, it would say camper shell and seats with proper restraint.
That would -- that would be another amendment unless -- that probably should be a second, another exemption separate from the camper shell.
Okay, how about if we just put an "or" camper shell or seat with the seat belt?
That's the amendment to the amendment. All right. When you... Senator Tina Munia Barnes' amendment has been amended by Senator Silva Tyran to include or... Or is... In -- is there an objection to the Silva Tyran amendment? There's an objection? There being an objection, all those in favor of the Silva Tyran amendment, indicate by raising your hand. Fails. On the Munia Barnes amendment.
No objection.
Objection. There's an objection to... Was there an objection? There is an objection to the Munia Barnes amendment for the camper shell. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. For the camper shell. Fails. Okay. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Sam Abini.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I've been listening intently on what's been transpired since we began discussing bill number 6031. And it's very clear that issues lie, I mean, the issues are lying between how we see how we carry out our lifestyles on Guam, whether it's business or private, and how, what we feel is best for our community. One thing is clear, for me at least. I know, I recall occasions where I see trucks, and not just private trucks, but military pickup trucks, law enforcement, fire departments, who use their pickup trucks in some capacity. And some are utilized by individuals or companies, government agencies, state departments, and so forth. And I just went through a quick Google search and see what, you know, how many states in our nation address the hazards of riding behind a pickup truck. There's about 31 states, including the D.C., but primarily to protect children. But I'd like to propose, I'd like to propose an amendment that probably will address some of our concerns regarding individuals in our commercial business or maybe in our public sector who would need to use their pickup trucks for the purpose of their operations. So I'd like to propose on page three, line four, where it represent, where section A or item A is the beginning of exemptions, yes, exemptions, to read as such. "The pickup truck being driven is participating in a commercial, agriculture, public service, or military operation, comma, or in the annual liberation day parade. And regardless of whether they're in a commercial business, agriculture, or public service or military operation, they still would have to be operating under 10 miles per hour." That would probably also address the carabao being tethered in the back of the pickup truck, because I wouldn't, I would assume a carabao wouldn't want to be dragged more than 10 miles per hour. So I propose this amendment to address at least that, that concern for businesses who would need to carry, like, for instance, I know that in Rattidian Point or I think somewhere up north, there are some private businesses that have trucks that bring in their tourists and they have their trucks. They are retrofitted, I recall, but at least they would be exempted with this amendment. So I ask that my colleagues support this particular amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If memory serves me right, the Duñez amendment went through with the routed roadway. So now we're going to be having cars, pickups going 10 miles an hour on the roadways?
No, not necessarily. It's just that if they are going to be utilizing their pickup truck with people in the back or whatnot, and it is for commercial purposes, agriculture, public service, or military operations, that those would be exempted, but...
But we still have the 10 mile per hour, so that would mean that on the routed roadway, these commercial pickup trucks would be traveling at 10 miles an hour.
Right. And this would probably include those occasions when we have our five Ks, where we see pickup trucks drive, you know, guys in the back carrying or driving through, distributing the red cones. They too are operating 10 miles per hour and whatnot. And so this is just one way to be able to allow them to operate.
All right. We're back on direct. Senator...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After discussing with the author and the author of the previous amendment, I will request to go ahead and withdraw my particular amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The amendment is withdrawn. Any other senators wish to be heard on the bill now? If not, I'll allow the author to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Oh, wait, there's still one more amendment that's... We'll take a recess. Senator Tyran, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I just want to say sijusmasi to my colleagues for taking the time this morning to really vet out this bill. It is truly intended to seek the safety of all of our people on Guam's roadways. Never is it intended to harm anybody economically or cause any sort of hardships. But just listening to the discussion, and I've heard everybody, everybody's input, and I do appreciate everybody's thoughts and consideration here, but some of the amendments that have come up in the last couple of hours have really taken away from the intent of the bill. So what I'm going to do is ask that we send this bill back to the committee so that we can discuss it further and perhaps improve it for possibly introduction later on in this session.
All right, on the motion to send the bill back to committee, hearing no objection, so ordered. Next bill on the agenda is bill 201. Can we have all the senators back in the hall, please? The next bill on the agenda is bill 201. Senator Tony Edes recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move bill 20131 as substituted by the Committee on Education and Public Libraries, an act to add a new Article VI to Chapter VI of 17 GCA relative to protection of minors and students' rights to the third reading pile. I'd like to speak on it, too.
On the motion to accept and to place in third, hearing no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, bill 20131, like its sister bill 202, would require parental consent before the Department of Education is allowed to administer questionnaires or studies on sensitive subjects and using student identifying information for any of these studies. Just late in 2010, there was a sex survey that was administered to a D.C. school that sparked a lot of controversy. And it was a middle school that came under fire. And it was a middle school that came under fire after distributing a survey to seventh graders, asking boys and girls about their sexual orientations and whether they knew about how to put on a condom among other sex-based questions. And this sparked up a lot of controversy, that the school district had to put a hold on it. And the students, they were continually asked about their genders, whether they're male or female, and why, and they were asked to identify themselves as straight, gay, sexual, lesbian, or not sure. And unfortunately, the opt-out letter to parents regarding this unit in a health class went home on the same day that the assessment was administered. And these are things that we just don't want to happen here in our school system. So this bill would require that such questionnaires include at the beginning of the survey instructions to the students that they're not to complete the survey unless a parent or guardian has given their written permission. Keeping our parents informed as to what's being asked of their children in our schools, and then giving consent before any questionnaire or survey is given, I think is truly important. Our parents need to know what's going on in our schools with their children, too. But, Mr. Speaker, I ask that my colleagues support this measure, and I look forward on voting.
I see Senator Duane's hand, and then Senator Guthridge.
Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 201-31, and I commend the author. I know there's a lot of discussion, Mr. Speaker, in our community, of the kind of discussions we need to be having with our children in school setting, and in other settings where the government has control, perhaps, public health and the like. But, you know, sometimes I think the state goes a little bit too far, and some things need to be left to families and to the discretion of parents. On one hand, a lot of times, we discuss the issues of how we feel in terms of what happens in the home, and new day and age, and how generations change. But on the other hand, sometimes I think we don't empower by trying to continue as the state to take away responsibilities, thinking that we know better. And so, Mr. Speaker, I commend the author, and I think sometimes, as a government, we need to back up and back off, and actually have families have more responsibility on discussing all aspects of their relationship with their children, and their children's relationship and orientation to themselves. So, Mr. Speaker, I commend the author, and I am in full support of this measure. Thank you.
Senator Guthridge? You're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very pleased to support this bill. I'm really surprised at the Department of Education. You know, in the conduct of surveys, there is a federally mandated protocol dealing with subjects. And this affects students in colleges, universities, and in schools. And generally, before a survey can be conducted, there's what is normally called a subject committee that reviews the survey form to ensure that it's in compliance with federal law, and that it's administered according to federal guidelines. So I'm wondering if the Department of Education, if the author knows if the Department of Education is following this procedure? Because if it isn't, I'm very concerned about that, and I'm wondering if this bill is strong enough to compel it to comply with the federal guidelines on survey subjects in public institutions, including public schools. So does the author of the bill know about this in any way?
Do you wish to yield, Senator Etta?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I'm not aware whether they are in compliance or not.
Maybe we should add a section there in the bill that basically says, and this should be standard throughout, really, any government entity, conducting a survey of subjects, in this case, students, must be ensure, must ensure that it's following the required guidelines, the federal guidelines.
The chair is going to take recess until 1:30. I'm going to allow you to get the federal guidelines and try to bring it in and see if you can include it in this, and we'll work this whole bill through before we come back at 1:30, but we'll take a recess until 1:30. The legislature's back in session. We're on Bill 201. Who wishes to be heard on the bill, please? I think Senator Munia Barnes and then Speaker Juan Pat. You're recognized.
Sijus Masi, Mr. Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak in support of this legislation. As we were talking in the, on recess with the author of the legislation, Mr. Speaker, sometimes it's more important to make sure that we protect, make sure that we're doing the right thing for our students. And the question that I asked was, was Department of Education looking into the IRB? And during the break, they said, yes, the Department of Education is looking, has been utilizing the Institution Review Board. And with that being said, then, again, just to be on the safe side, that we make sure that it's put into, it's included. But I just stand in support of the legislation. I know that the IRB, the Interinstitutional Review Board, is acknowledged, and that we can proceed with at least the safeguards on this bill. So I stand and rise in support of Bill 201. Sijus Masi.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I have so many documents here. I mean, I understand, of course, the intent of 201 in terms of surveying the students, and of course, the information, you want to make sure that information, of course, that specifically identifies certain things that, you know, you want to be able to protect. And I would like to present some of, you know, surveys that are actually taking place in the schools, and there may be others as well that may not be a privy to. One of the most important surveys, it's an application that the department gives out to all the children at the beginning of the school year, and that's for their free and reduced meals at their school. That information, the information that they need in this application, of course, will be the household members, and how many individuals there are, whether, you know, they live in federal property or work in federal property, do they, and what their income is, what their earnings are before the deductions, if they're receiving any support, alimony, that information, retirement, what they're receiving, and any other income. There is also a requirement, and this, remember now, is a federal requirement, this is not a local requirement, in order to participate in the free and reduced lunch program, breakfast and lunch program, is that it also asks for the last four digits of their social security number, the parent's social security number. So I just want to make sure that we're not then prohibiting something like this in which the department actually, you know, requires to get these numbers in order to receive federal dollars for the free and reduced lunch program. So that is definitely one form that happens every year at the beginning of the school year. The other is that, and there is a board policy, and the board policy, of course, says the social security number shall not be used for any identification purposes. So if there is going to be any kind of ID or request for numbers from the students, then it's normally given a totally separate numbering system, but never using a child's social security number, and only the parent when, the last four, like I said, for the free and reduced lunch program. The other that's in the, currently in public law, is that, and I would like to, if I can share that with you, it's in Seventeen GCA, Chapter Four, the Curriculum and Text. And what this reads is that pupils may be tested only for proficiency, you know, and basic skills, and for basic skills in academic subject matter without the need for parental permission. Any testing pertaining to pupil attitudes, parent attitudes, or personal information pertaining to the pupil and his family, or as concerns, their habits or values, including personality inventories, value appraisals, psychological inventories, which includes intelligence testings for academic changes, or individually administered intelligence tests shall be given only after receiving written parental permission. And test routes, test results shall be made available to the parent or the guardian upon request, and that's in the law. And additionally, it says that since it is the responsibility of parents and guardians to provide for and ensure the health, education, and general well-being of their children, that this section here affirms and defines the rights of parents or guardians to decide through their representative what the pupils learn and how they are taught. And sometimes there are cases where the child, where it says here that a child may not be placed in an experimental or a pilot program without the prior knowledge and written consent of the parent or the guardian. There's, so there's a lot of protective measures, not just by law, but also board policy. There are, there is, however, what we call, then, the Joint Guidance on the Application of Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, known as FERPA, and then also, everyone's familiar with this one, is the Health Insurance Probability and Accountability Act of 1996, HIPPA, which speaks to student records. And the rule here is that, and, you know, is to make sure that everyone in the educational system, and it even addresses private schools as well, the difference, however, is that private and religious schools at the elementary or secondary level generally do not, and I say generally, do not receive funds from the Department of Education, so they're not guided by FERPA, except, however, that if they are getting federal funds, then they would have to follow these guidelines. The purpose, of course, of this is to address apparent confusion for everyone in the school system, healthcare professionals, and others in terms of maintaining student records. And it also addresses certain disclosures that are allowed without consent or authorization under both laws, especially those related to health and safety emergency situations. Mr. Speaker, before anyone in the Department of Education is going to test the students, with exception of the annual testing that they give in the beginning of the year and the end of the year, and those are the standardized tests, those are tests that are given out, and those are for academic reasons, they're strictly curriculum-based, so therefore, those go out without individually then getting the permission of the parents to conduct that test. If there is going to be any type of testing of, let's say, children with a disability, if they're recommended for that testing, of course, there's a lot that you, the parents are involved immediately from the get-go, from everything, from observations to any types of dialogue going on between the CRT, the teacher, the students, and the parents. So it's always with the parents involved, and then the actual testing, the final testing, of course, that too will be through with the parents' consent as well. Many times, you find is that those types of parental permission is actually, or the testing is actually then pursued by the parents more so than anyone else. If there are going to be surveys as well to be done by adults outside of the department for whatever reasons, for studies to be conducted, they do have to go through that Institution Review Board, and they would review it, the superintendent would give the final permission, and of course, one of the most things to make sure is the hardships being done to anyone being tested, and more importantly, you want to protect the privacy of the individual. You don't take names of the individuals as well as part of that survey. What concerns me, I guess, and I want to make sure, is that because there are federal laws, we have our local laws, we have board policies, is sometimes the over-mandating some of these things, because what you're, we're doing then, in essence, and I can only speak at the time when I was in the system, and there are certain times, or certain programs that we have, that the counselors may want to do, or teachers may want to even survey their students, and I'll give you an example of that. When the home-based program was instituted in the middle schools, what that program really is all about is matching about twenty students, pairing out twenty students with one adult advocate in the school. And what they do is that although there are some, depending on the school, certain curriculums that they would develop for the teachers at the different grade levels to actually discuss with the students. And as much as some of us may think that, you know, some of these things we really shouldn't even be talking about with our kids, are actually, topics are really important, especially with, at the middle school level, because that's the time when so many changes are happening with the child, socially, emotionally, physically, morally, you know, intellectually, you know, and emotionally. So, you know, and that's dealing with the whole child, and, you know, the day of just dealing with academics only and physical needs of our children, that was, you know, in the past, schools have changed, our children have changed, times have changed, our problems are definitely far more complex than they were for many of us and past generations. And the home-based program, for some schools, they call it the home-based, others may call it the advisor-advisy program, it might be a wrap session, you know, whatever names that they want to call it, but it's a time in which an adult advocate, and with counselors in there, and sometimes you bring in professionals, depending on what it is that you're going to be discussing, would require, of course, the individual, the adult advocate, knowing what are the needs of the children, what is it that, you know, we can discuss with them. An example is this survey that was actually given to the entire school for the home-based program that were designed by the teachers, as subject matters to be able to talk during the home base. And there is titled Concerns, Worries, and Fears. And I remember that one year that was actually done in the school, that was a school principal of, the biggest fear that the children had there was death and dying. And in the discussion that was going on was, because, you know, at that time, there were several completed suicides and attempted suicides by middle schoolers, and children were all fearing that. Of course, the loss of a loved one is a very difficult, the most difficult stressor for anyone, including adults. And then at that time, too, that was the beginnings of when parents were actually going off to Iran, and the children were worried that there's that separation with a parent in the military. And at that time, of course, when it was being done, my school was actually receiving all of the children from Anderson Air Force Base, and that's why that subject, you know, came up. So my fear, like I said earlier, is that when, when eventually are we going to just stop mandating some of these things to give, you know, the educators, in defense of our teachers, and the educators and administrators of our school, is that how can we best work with the whole, excuse me, with the whole child, when, of course, for, you know, psychological testing, you know, mental-type testings as well, of course, those automatically, you just can't do it without parental, you know, permission. Political affiliations, nobody's ever really asked, at least I don't know, at least in my time, we never asked it. But we do know our high schools are very... But we do know our high schools are very, right now, very active, they have been. Our schools, our high schools have always been inviting candidates during election year to come and, and, you know, talk about their platforms. And I know the children are formulating, of course, in their minds, you know, whether they want to go one way or the other, in a, by affiliating with a certain party or not. And in a political science class, if that's happening too, so a political science teacher then cannot even survey the students, like, you know, how many of you, maybe your parents actually kind of tend to be Democrat or Republican, so, I mean, something like that, then now we're going to say you can't, the political science teachers can't ask those questions, can't have a discussion, you know, in their class. The sexual behavior and attitudes, illegal, antisocial, self-discriminating behavior, the department, they have this Youth at Risk survey that's actually being conducted by Curriculum and Instruction Office, and that automatically, even before it's done, comes already with parental permission. So, you know, and then social security, of course, that's not there, read that, you know, to you. So I'm just saying that, and I don't know, this might take some time, maybe to try to really vet this now back and forth with what's, what's law federally, what's law locally, what's in board policy, and, you know, and I'm not going to take the same position, of course, that the university talks about, but at the same time, because it is an educational institution, there has to be some academic freedom in which, of course, you know, some of these discussions can actually take place in our school. And you've heard this many times, a lot of our children are always asking this question, I mean, what's the relevancy of some of the things that are actually, you know, being taught versus what's actually having, happening out in, you know, in the real world? And although, yes, there are minors, and although, yes, we as policymakers always want to protect, you know, their rights as well, but at the same time, I'd just like for us to kind of take one step back first and kind of really look at this and see just how much of it are we going to really be tying, of course, the hands of, you know, the educators, you know, in our school system. Rest assured that assessments, of course, and the student evaluation, that always comes with parental permission. And it just brings me to the other topic then of the comprehensive guidance and counseling values clarification programs for our students. Then you know what this is going to do automatically, and I didn't realize that, that's going to shut down now and kill the home-based program in all the middle schools, because there's no way, once this passes, all the middle schools have to get rid of that home-based program, the advisor-advisy program, because that's exactly what that is, that whole, that whole program. Guidance and counselors then, I guess, maybe they can't talk to the kids about anything that's going on, and believe it or not, whether we like to talk about it or not, but in the middle level, like I said, all these things emotionally is happening to them, physically and socially, and many of our children are exploring, wanting to know where they want to go, what they want to do, and as much as we don't want it, we want to protect them, we want to shield them, but it's difficult to do that, and if we just want to lock them up in a, in a room or what, but that's not the case. And many times, based on what they're going through truly affects them emotionally, and if they can't go to anyone to talk to, an adult, an adult advocate, and here I've been trying to push this for so many years as a school administrator, is that our adults in the schools need to be advocates of our children. They need to know that the children can go somewhere and find some adult in the school that they can turn to and talk to them about some of the problems that they're going to. And if we continue then to tie the hands of school administrators, tie the hand of school teachers, tie the hands of our guidance counselors, then you don't need those guys. You might as well just have homeschool all of our children. I'm sorry, but that's just the way I feel, and this is a very, very touchy issue, it's some, I don't know, somewhere in the middle of the road, how we're going to do this, but, and because of that one section there now, really, I just, I really can't seem now, although yes, originally, I thought that maybe it might not be as prohibitive, but the restrictions such as where it says here, that, you know, times and periods government should school shall not administer to a minor or student any academic, non-academic survey, assessment, analysis, evaluation, or comprehensive guidance and counseling values clarification program which reviews in any one of these following. So that means if a student should come and try to bring up any one of these subjects, then is it then the understanding from everybody here is that every adult in the school campus is going to say, I can't talk to you, I can't talk to you about, you know, anything about your political affiliations, I can't talk to you about maybe sexual behavior and attitudes, antisocial, you know, activities? Oh my gosh, what's that, what's that mean for our guidance counselors? Then if that's the case, I guess DOE will not need guidance counselors in our schools anymore. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any other senators wish to be heard? Any other senators wish to be heard? If not, I'll invite the main sponsor to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, after all the discussion that just went on this afternoon, I thank my colleagues for giving their input and their suggestions, and, you know, Mr. Speaker, all Bill two oh one thirty-one is just to seek the permission of parents before they do a survey. It does not stop them from having surveys or questionnaires or anything of that sort. All it does is just ensure that the parents are knowledgeable and have the knowledge of what's going on in their children's lives. You know, we, when a child does wrong in school, or when something, there's a student that's bad, the first person we blame are the parents. The parents are not active, the parents are not there, the parents are absent parents, but yet, when we have an opportunity to turn around and keep the parents involved in what goes on in their child's education, now we're saying we're putting too much mandates on them. All it is, is just to seek, ensure that the parents know what's going on. And whether it's an additional mandate, whether it's going to be a statute, I believe our parents have every right to know what's going on with their children. I have children that are still in school, and I have every right to know what's going on with them. And so should every parent. We talk about protecting our children, we talk about protecting those that can't answer or speak for themselves, but yet, now that we have a time to come out and say, you know what, before anything goes on, let's ensure that the parents know that their children are answering these questions, that their parents knows what's going on in school, so that they can become more involved. Maybe if they seek the parents' permissions more often, parents will be at parent-teacher conference, parents will be there at school programs, parents will be there for their children no matter what. You know, there's nothing in this bill that stops our education department from doing any surveys, not, there's nothing. It doesn't say you can't do a survey. It just says before you do the survey, you need to ask the parents' permission. I just hope that I can get my colleague's support on this, so that we can ensure that our children are still protected, we can ensure that our parents are, knows what's going on with our children in school. It's not saying that our educators or our administrators are not doing their job, or they don't know what they're doing, it's just saying, let's let the parents know what's going on in their child's lives. Let's let the parents know what's going on in school. That's all it's saying. Mr. Speaker, if I can, I would just like to make an amendment, though, on page four. When you get to line one, just to delete the word "or" and put "and." So I'll say, notice if you are younger than eighteen years of age and a student in a public school. So instead of "or," insert the word "and."
Any objection to that amendment? Any senator wish to be heard on the amendment? Any objection? Hearing none.
Mr. Speaker, my other amendment would be to include Senator Duñez, Guthertz, and Barnes as cosponsors.
On that amendment? All right. On the amendment to add the cosponsors. Bill two oh two, Senator, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill two oh two thirty-one, like its companion Bill two oh one thirty-one, this bill requires parental consent before Guam's public schools may impose any mental health studies on our children. And this bill also requires that the parents be adequately informed about the nature of the studies.
On the motion to accept and to place on third, you're recognized to speak now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My apologies. Bill two oh two thirty-one, as substituted by the Committee on Education and Public Libraries, is an act to add a new Article VII to Chapter Six of seventeen GCA relative to the protection of minors and students' rights. I'd like to move it to the third read and file and speak on the motion, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, like its companion Bill two oh one thirty-one, this bill requires parental consent before Guam Public Schools may impose a mental health studies on our children. And this bill also requires that the parents be adequately informed of the nature of the studies, and what study, and what the study is to be used for, and who will have access to this, continued to the information contained in the studies. Mr. Speaker, in every, in nearly every state has enacted legislation that requires parental consent prior to conducting any mental or physical health studies on school students. And all too often, the school districts across the nation have resorted to these, to the studies, many of which were not conducted by physicians or health professionals, that they have been used to strong-arm parents into medicating their children with dangerous psychotropic drugs. Diagnosis and treatment of any mental health condition, just like medical conditions, should involve the informed consent of parents and should include the parent's choice of healthcare practitioners. We don't want to resort to the practice where a teacher or counselor performs a series of tests and completes a questionnaire prior to calling the parents to say, you ought to consider retinol for your child, because for Johnny's ADHD. Mr. Speaker, just like two oh one thirty-one, this is just to get the parents' consent prior to giving a survey or questionnaire on for medical or physical studies. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any senators wish to be heard on Bill two oh two? Senator, Speaker Wampat, you're recognized. After Speaker Wampat, anybody else wish to be recognized?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I, the only thing I'm kind of wondering here is that, because it says the use of educational settings to screen students and adolescents from mental disorders, is that all, in all educational institutions, and only, again, like I say, that if there is to be any kind of testing for mental disorders, and this is not all the school, the entire school population, this is on a case-by-case basis, and there is a long process in which a child then is going to be tested, would have to be, you know, screened, in the sense that there would be observations again in the classrooms, you get all the teachers involved. I can only speak from the perspective, of course, as an educator. Now, if the screening will be, let's say, from mental health, or public health, or, I don't know, maybe child protective services, who want to come in and then maybe, let's say, screen and test all the sixth graders or all ninth graders, I'm not, that's not clear to me. But in this case, however, for testing, and I don't have any, you know, real objections to this, because psychological and psychiatric type of testing definitely must have, you know, parental consent. But I, I'm just looking at now line eleven on page one where it says mandatory, because there is, there shouldn't be mandatory, because once you say mandatory, that means it's a must, you got to do it. Then, yes, you got to get the parents' permission for this. So this should not be, I'm, I saw from saying, unless I'm reading it wrong, but when you do these type of testings, it's normally at the request of a professional, a healthcare professional, or an educator, if it's, let's say, for, you know, some other disabilities that they need to be testing. So I don't know, I don't want to make the motion to delete that, not knowing maybe that later the author, unless maybe the author can now actually then respond to that, that question about the need for making it such as mandatory psychological or psychiatric Can the author answer that question on the mandatory?
On the, do yield, Senator Ito.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the purpose of such screenings and the ramification of the consent such as mandatory psychological psychiatric treatment for their child and family, in the event that any, it is recognized in a school that a child needs to be, needs to be evaluated, we want to make sure that that child still gets the evaluation, but still with the consent of the parents. Now, whether it's going to be a mandatory evaluation, or something that they, the, the school recognizes but says, you know what, we need to take this to the parents and let the parents go and get their child checked, then whichever way we want, whichever way the parent decides to go on this matter, it gives them that option to go one way, or if it's still a mandatory evaluation, then still, at least we have the parent, the parental consent involved there.
Satisfied, Madam Speaker.
No, it really does not sit well with me, because when you say mandatory, it's mandatory, and therefore, the doctor can come and say to the parent, this is the law, it's mandatory, whether you consent or not, because I'm the, you know, the expert in the matter, because the law says it's mandatory, and I think your child needs to get it, then I, similar to, to line fourteen, where if they don't return the form, then they have this passive consent. So, and that, you know, is fine, I understand, so long as the information goes out, but even with that, I still have some concern as well, because how do we know that the parent actually was in receipt of that form? You know, children, you know, they'll, they'll do a lot of things when they bring home forms, you know, to the parents, and some may be too busy, some may have never even seen it, and then so, okay, so we're going to move on, and then because it is a passive consent. With the mandatory, however, that really just does not sit well with me, I just don't like the idea that these be mandatory. I can understand if you are an inmate, or you are rather in a mental institution, and it is, you know, in order to do further evaluation, psychiatric, you know, evaluation, then because the parents have, you know, admitted them into mental health, that they're, that they are giving then basically their consent, and I'm sure that they'll ask them to sign again for one, for admitting them into the hospital, and two, that if, you know, further evaluation needs to happen, that they're basically consenting to this. I'm just thinking of all the, you know, we talk about educators and how we want to protect our children from, some of the educators are doing this, but what are... our children from, some of the educators are doing this, but what are we doing to protect even our children from some of these other health professionals who may not have the best interest of the child either? You know, because this is just something routine, we're going to go there and not really do a thorough evaluation. I would rather than then mandatory, maybe a consent, you know, if they consent such as, hmm, that's not even going to work. I'm just going to make the motion to delete the mandatory and then do require that they get the parent's signature, the parent's permission, and that they really sit. And I don't know whether there's even, you know, the difference with this versus what we do in our schools, just to show you how our schools have been doing this, is that they can never place a child in any particular program, they can't even add anything on to their IEP unless the teachers and the parents agree to what it is, what, what type of program to be provided for them. They go through all that, and then now here we are with this, we're just going to go with a blanket passive consent, and this has to be really tightened, that scares me. I surely wouldn't want my child to go there and then with whether, you know, they're, to be told that it's mandatory, and we're fearing that sometimes, yes, they might want to go and do other type of treatments, and you get parents who, you know, are not that, you know, well-versed in, in some of the treatment, that many times, you know, we feel intimidated by professionals, by these, you know, knowledgeable people, of course, on the subject matter, but, but because we just don't know enough, that we just kind of consent, you know, to it, we kind of give up, you know, all of our rights, basically, and just say, you know, "You're the professional, you're the trained individual, you, you make that decision." So, I, I, oh, gosh. Yeah, just delete mandatory.
On the amendment to delete mandatory, any senator wish to be heard on that? Any objection to the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? Hearing or seeing none? Any other senator wish to be heard on the main bill?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. This, you know, as we went through processes to getting bills on the agenda, we often said that this was a companion bill to the previous bill that we had just deliberated to a certain extent, and, and I'm thinking that it really is not a companion bill at all. I'm wondering if the author would kind of yield to a question?
Would you have to yield?
This is the question. The question is, does it then mean if a, a family member, a parent says, "I do not consent," I do not give consent for my child undergoing evaluation, emotional behavior, mental specific learning disabilities, or other health impairments, mental health screening, does that mean by signing this, that automatically says that there is no more process that has been kicked in through IDEA, Special Education, all of those processes, the child study team? Is, is that the intent of this, that as soon as a parent says, "No, no consent," that means no processes go forward? That with this signature, the story of this child is determined?
Senator Addit, do you yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The intent is to ensure that they do receive the parental consent, whether the, the parent approves or disapprove, the parental consent is what this bill is about.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that answer. And so then, I, I really need to sit down and look at this a little bit more, because that's not how I'm reading it, and I would, the whole special education process, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, I, I think this needs to be looked at very, very carefully, because as I know, there are families who are tuned into the whole process, and then there are families who are not. And the focus of IDEA really is to protect that child, and sometimes it's easier if we don't have that kid evaluated, because it's just easier to push to the side. And so whether or not a family member consents or not, the whole process needs to be there. And so I'm going to sit down and look at this a little bit more. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yamashita. Any other senators wish to be heard on Bill 202? Any other senators? Seeing no hands go up, I will invite the sponsor to close.
Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to move down to the voting file.
On the motion to place the bill into the voting file, any objection? The next bill on the agenda is Bill 306. Senator Mavina, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to move Bill 30631 to the third reading file, and I'd like to briefly discuss the bill.
Seeing no objection.
Thank you. Bill 30631 addresses several things. One in particular that I'd like to point out is that this would bring Guam into a treaty agreement that exists among many countries, and at this point, the fifty states, Puerto Rico, Northern Mariana Islands, and, and many of the islands, our neighboring island countries, have already enacted legislation to authorize a transfer of foreign nationals who've been convicted and sentenced within their state or territorial courts. What this bill does essentially is allows Guam to be part of this treaty that has been in existence since nineteen seventy-six. And at this point, I think what I'd like to do is just point out some of the clear benefits. Many of us know that our prison system has, has an abundance of, excuse me, inmates or detainees that are not proportionate to our, even their representation in the population. And I'd like to go ahead and share just a few of these. Last month, when I thought that the bill would be heard, the statistics that I received from our Department of Corrections is that currently about a quarter of our inmates or detainees come from the Federated States of Micronesia. We have a good number that's also coming from the Northern Mariana Islands, some from Palau, some from China, some from the Philippines. Now, not all countries, or not all of these foreign nationals come from countries that are part of these treaties, but, but of the, the second largest group that is sitting in our, in our system is actually from the Federated States of Micronesia. According to the director, on average, it costs over thirty-five thousand dollars to house, to house our inmates. Today, that, that comes out to approximately almost twenty-one million dollars that we spend. Just recently, in the Guam, in our, in our media, twenty-six, they mentioned again that twenty-six percent of Guam's prison population comes from a combination of individuals from Palau, FSM, and the Marshall Islands. The governor also pointed out that six million dollars last year is what it costs to feed our immigrant prisoners. Our regional migrants make up about only eighteen percent of Guam's population, that's eighteen percent of our population, but within our prison population, we're looking at about twenty-six percent. The number that was given to me last month, out of the total population over at, at our prison system, we have about a hundred forty-five from, from FSM, nine from Palau, twenty-two from CNMI, six from China, forty-three from the Republic of the Philippines. But I want to just focus on, on our, the largest numbers, other than our U.S. citizens, our citizens. We have, again, a hundred forty-five from FSM, that's about over five million dollars is what it costs our government to house these prisoners or detainees. Now, the obvious benefits of being included in this treaties is that, one, we have, we'll have a decrease in the administrative burden of, of taking care of these clients, lower diplomatic tension, lower number of detainees in our system and inmates, lower cost of imprisonment, and with our budget crisis that we have today, this is something that we have to seriously consider. One nice thing that was pointed out by the attorney, one of our assistant attorney generals, he points out that this allows us to fill in the gaps for those individuals that would not necessarily fall under the prison transfer program that they have now. And the most importantly, this program is federally funded, so the cost of transferring the detainees would not fall under the government of Guam. Of course, the global benefits or the overall benefits are, are several-fold. The purpose of this is that we want them, is rehabilitative. We believe, or the treat, those who are involved in the treaties believe that those who are transferred would have better rehabilitation opportunities in their home countries. Law enforcement would be, would be better off, we'd have better diplomatic relations, and so forth. I'd like to also point out some significant benefits, and, and many people have questioned about this. It has to be clear that there's three people, there's three groups that has to agree to this. The person who wants to be transferred out of their, of the guest country, in this case it would be Guam, the, the sending country, which would be our government, our Guam, and the receiving country. So there, there are a lot of details on how this process can be put forth, but by virtue of the fact that the, the Department of Justice would be working with our local federal, our local prison system to create the, the process itself, like what all other countries have and what other states have, these are already set. What, what this bill will just be doing will set the groundwork to get all the wheels in motion, so that we will be part of this treaties and will benefit from this, from this federal program or this international program. And I ask my colleagues to please support Bill 30631. It would definitely save our government a lot of budgetary costs, and it'll also give a good chance for these detainees or inmates to go back to their home countries where rehabilitation would probably be best off. Thank you very much.
Senator Palacios, you're recognized, and then Senator Munya Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 306 dash thirty-one. And in addition to the information presented by the author, I would like, of course, to add this point. Bill 306 proposes two objectives, and that is, Mr. Speaker, one is the, actually, three objectives. One is the humanitarian aspect of it, by permitting the individual to return to their home of origin, and this is, of course, voluntary, there are some guidelines, this, so that only those that satisfy the model that is approved by the International Prison Transfer Unit of the Department of Justice, that would be actually the model that, that would be implemented here. The other objective is that it would alleviate the overcrowding, relieving, of course, correctional officers, that's the guards, the parole board, parole officers, counselors, of the overload of cases. This will make it then more efficient for them to provide the services to those who are remaining behind. Any time that you can transfer at least one individual, that would be, of course, humanitarian aspect of it, you say the government of Guam do not have to spend that extra taxpayers' money to maintain them, and of course, overall, reducing the government cost. The program is voluntary, it is to be administered by the governor's office in conjunction with the Department of Correction and the parole board, and of course, in accordance with the model established by the International Prison Transfer Unit of the Department of Justice. The International Prison Transfer Unit of DOJ, of course, is a member of the administrating authority, so they are there involved, and I would think that this program will succeed countries participating, Hong Kong, Japan, Federated States of Micronesia, Marshall, Thailand, and Tonga. Right now, there might be probably people that might apply to be transferred to their home of origin. There's some complication with Bill 306 passage, it will facilitate the process, Madam Speaker. And so I rise in support of this. It, it is time that we start addressing the humanitarian aspect. It has some, I guess, some elements of rehabilitation, just mentioned by the author, of course, the relieving of the overcrowding, and, you know, reducing, of course, the cost. And in the end, there is no risk of anything diminishing, for example, the benefit to the prisoner by implementing this program. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Palacios. On the motion, if anybody would like to speak, Senator, Tom Addit, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, you know, on the surface, this, this certainly looks like a, a move in the right direction. However, I, I have some questions. The number, a hundred and forty-five FSM detainees are currently in the Guam's Department of Corrections, and I, I wonder if the author knows what is the proportion of those detainees who are American citizens? They are not American citizens.
Senator, do you, you had answered the question, and you can speak up, so everybody will have the benefit of hearing the answer.
Thank you. The answer to that is a hundred forty-five of the, that number represents the actual foreign national, which is they're, they hold the citizenship of FSM.
So they're not second-generation FSM who were born and raised on Guam?
No. These would be the numbers, these would be the, this would be the number that would be eligible for this program.
Okay. Now, I understand that in this program, of course, it's a two-way sort of arrangement. Guam must be willing to send these detainees back to their home of origin, but also, I understand that the home of origin has to be willing to accept them. Now, I've heard in some discussions that the home of origin really does not want these guys back. Maybe if the author can, if the author of the bill can comment on that.
Senator Mavina, do you also yield at this time?
Yes, thank you, I will yield. That is a good point, and I know that there's concerns about the, the equivalency of the systems, and the, the comparison that I would give is, is what's happening, like in California and Mexico. Now, because this is a treaties, of course, there are other probably factors that are, that are involved when it comes to country-to-country arrangements, and I, I understand the concern that the receiving country may or may not want. The point being is that by implementing this bill into, into law, would allow us to have this opportunity to jump into the program wherein those who are qualified can go, can go, provided, yes, that the receiving country will receive them. Now, there, like I mentioned, there are other countries that are also represented in our prison population. We have CNMI, we have Palau, China unfortunately is not in it, nor is the Republic of the Philippines, but by virtue of just implementing this, we'd be able to be part of that big system. And I, I would like to, I would think that, that the receiving country would like to see their individuals rehabilitate and to come home and have the remaining, you know, their remaining term to be done at home and not on foreign soil. And this goes both ways, by the way, and this is not, this, this means that with Guam joins this treaty, this organ, this, this, this program, that our sons, daughters who are probably, probably serving elsewhere would be able to also return home under this federal program.
So back to my question.
Yes.
Has there been any discussion with, let's say, the FSM council office or, or any representatives of FSM? Because my, the, the feedback that I've gotten is that, hey, they're yours now, they're your problem. And so that partner, I mean, that second half then doesn't really want to engage, so it may be that, you know, this is not going to go anywhere.
Senator?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and thank you. I have not had any direct conversation with the government, but there are discussions being made. I know that our administration's in full support of this, and I'm not privy to whatever discussions they may have at their level, but like I said, this will, this will allow us to enter into that state. Let me just share one, one scenario. One individ, the director had shared with me, one recent inmate who was just recently released, who left, who came out and had no family, no friends, no jobs, and had wanted to return back to his country. He would have been a perfect candidate, you know, would have been maybe another month or two to serve, and that, then that negotiation, negotiation would also be And that negotiation would also be administration to administration. But no, I have not had that direct conversation. But I know that they are, that the governor's office, at least, who's in support of this, are working on it.
And finally, Madam Speaker, if the author would yield again and maybe enlighten us on, what was the Attorney General's position on this particular matter?
Thank you.
Senator Medvedev?
In actuality, well, the Attorney General was, the one who was there, the Assistant AG, was actually in support of this when we had our markup meeting. And he had pointed out that this actually fills in the gap. Whatever program that they have existing now does not cover the individuals that would, you know, that this group would be meeting. So he supports it. We had also met with our district attorney, and she is, of course, had voiced support of it. She would also be responsible, working with the Department of Justice, once this program is in place.
Then it appears that maybe the Attorney General's office has changed its position, because I recall that in the paper, at least as reported in the media, the Attorney General was not in support of this program because their position was that they committed the crime here, they were convicted, and they should serve the time here on Guam and be punished for the crime that they committed, as opposed to sending them back home where their penal system is very inadequate, maybe just getting released into their neighborhoods. And so I'm surprised that the Attorney, that, you know, the author has stated that the Attorney General has now changed his position and is in full support of this program. Finally, just one last question. On page three, on line seven, it makes reference to a Guam decision-making authority for the program. Can you please explain, clarify what that is?
Page three, line seven.
Okay. At this point, you know, there should be one entity that would be, you know, administering the program. And I believe on page five, on line 11, it points out that the Department of, a director of Department of Corrections shall provide administrative clerical support to administer this particular program. What this one is just, what this section is basically pointing out is who would be that one central person or group that would be making that decision. And it may very well be just, you know, a few members that consist of members from the Guam parole board or the Department of Educ, or, excuse me, Department of Corrections. But they are, they have to select, they have to designate the Guam decision-making authority for the program.
So you see, it's not, it's not clear, at least I'm still a little confused then as to, so we decide, okay, here's, here's an individual, we want to send him and spend, to spend his next 20 years, instead of spending the next 20 years in our local penitentiary, that then we want to send him back to his home of origin. So it's still not quite clear. Is that, is that the DOC, is that the Director for the Department of Corrections, is that his decision to make? Or is there going to be a group of, is there going to be a body which consists of the director, the AG, whoever else? I don't know. If the author can clarify that, please.
This bill was designed so that the governor will work, would work with his Guam parole board and the Department of Corrections to identify who that person or persons will be, as opposed to the bill indicating who, you know, exactly who that individual should be. So this would give them that power to be able to form that group or identify that key individual. At this point, you know, at one point, at the beginning of, at the beginning of the draft, I believe, there was question whether we should make it the Department of Corrections Director. But after some discussion, it was decided that this would probably be best, it would probably be best if it was arranged this way where they would make that selection. And they have up to one year to design, to design that administrator or the administration of this program.
Quite frankly, I'm not sure I understood that. So do we have a, something like a parole board that will decide to send this detainee or this person back to their home of origin? It's still not clear. Do we have like a board of which a majority must vote to send the individual back? Or is it one individual, the Director of the Department of Corrections, who has that authority to say, that prisoner gets sent back home?
If I can clarify, Madam Speaker, yielding to the question. The process is pretty detailed, actually, and I have not gone through in detail how it would work. In this case, let me look at my notes real quickly, it's been a while.
The details of the process will most likely be developed after the law, after this becomes law. But before I vote for it, I would like to know if this authority to selectively pick out prisoners to be sent back to their home origin rests with one person, or whether it will rest with a, with a, some kind of board?
That's a good question. Actually, the individuals that will be involved are multifold. There's, there are basic requirements that would be, would be entailed. For instance, in this case, and I'll just go ahead and outline, prisoners must be obviously convicted and sentenced, they are prisoner, and the Guam and the receiving country has to be consenting to the transfer. They must be a national of the receiving country, minimum six months must remain on sentence. The judgment of the prisoner must be final, no charge or retainers may be pending for the prisoner in the country of origin. And there must be like dual criminality existing in both countries. Now, those who are involved are the U.S. Attorney's Office. The Attorney General is a central authority of the program. They're the ones who would delegate, they delegate, excuse me, delegate the authority, excuse me. They are the ones who review the package as far as who and whether this person can or can be qualified for the program. So it doesn't rest in that one individual. It actually gets even higher. It goes to the Department of Justice, they review the complete file or whatnot. But there is a strict requirement, and that is actually set up with the International Prison Transfer Unit that sits under the Department of Justice, federal Department of Justice. So yes, I understand your concern, the concern of my colleague, I would be too, especially if I'm a victim of a certain crime and a person is sitting in prison. What this does is it allows us to be in a program where certain prisoners who would meet a qualification, and yes, there might be some cases where, where the receiving, the, excuse me, the guest country, Guam, would not want to send them off, and those people would not. But then there may be a good number that may be well-qualified, who is taking up $35,000 a year in our, you know, in our budget. So, but I, yeah.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I would just like to close by saying, I think, you know, from an economic standpoint, this is really great. Boy, for everyone we send back, we get to save $35,000 a year. But then I also have to take a look about, what about the families of the victim upon which the crime was committed? I would think that that individual also will want that satisfaction. I mean, I think as humans, there's that element of wanting to see that that individual pays back for the crime that was committed. And to just watch that individual just get sent back, not knowing what the heck's gonna, you know, whether he's actually going to be punished, just kind of seems to be unsettling. And so it seems unfair to the, to the family or the victim that was, that was actually injured by this crime that was committed, to just, you know, let him go, go back to his own elements, and then not even knowing if, as soon as he gets off the plane, they'll probably let him go. So I do have concerns about that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Ada. On the motion, I recognize Senator Munya Barnes.
Sezus Massey, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this Bill 306 dash 31 LS. I just want to note for the record that when this bill was first introduced, there have been folks in the community who've been trying to work to make sure that folks who do not, who are not law-abiding citizens, who are not from Guam, and that if they were to be punished, then that they really should be deported and go back to where they came from. And I know that in this term, I had the opportunity to speak to the counsel general of the FSM who realizes that there's so many other factors and components that lie with those who commit crimes here on Guam. When folks come in from the Federated States of Micronesia and they first come to our island, which is probably more westernized, or which is more westernized than their island, of course, there's a definite culture shock. There are a lot of things that they don't understand. There are a lot of rules and regulations that may, they may be lenient back in their island, but is against the law here. So I know that education was something that they talked about doing, and they also talked about the possibility of deportation and working a system out that has been federally recognized, I guess, the program that's been federally recognized. One of the problems that I had internally, when I had talked to some of the administrators within the counsel general of FSM and other counsel generals, was the mere fact of the defendant who gets deported, what regulations that he finishes his term, maybe because there's some guidelines in place already, if it's over not less than six months, if there's no restitution that has to be paid, and it's just for punishment that they can go back. But once they do their time in the island, you know, do they have any rights coming back to our island? And that's what I don't see in this bill, is the mere fact that even as we speak to today, based on the differences on names that are given to an individual from that specific destination, that specific island, they can always change their name and come back and re-enter the island on a completely different passport. And you and I know, Madam Speaker, that this is not the first time we've heard of it. And that's what bothers me, is because we've seen it one too many times. I know that this has been brought up, and I'd be remiss if I didn't share with the good author of the legislation, that there have been talks about this kind of program and supporting this program, so that the financial burden that's placed on the island to take care of their own people, for them is more of an embarrassment, and what can we do to fix this? And if there was one thing that was brought up in the beginning was pure education. And the second thing is being able to fix what, or to streamline what we need to do here. And if somebody does the crime, they should do the time. But the privilege of them to come from their island to come and experience, I would say, the free world, or living the American dream of being free and having to say what you please as long as you abide by the rules. And if you violate that, then, you know, the rules should say you should go back. But again, based on what has been afforded to the agreements that are set, because we fall under the United States, then, then where do we go from there? And when we had conversations as a committee, Madam Speaker, and I only bring this up is because when we look at the exploitation of humans and modern-day slavery and combating human trafficking, these were some of the concerns that were brought up. And of course, we continue to work on this, as we have a lot of the stakeholders in this community who are trying to collaboratively work on issues like human trafficking, and of course, working with those violators who've broken the laws of our territory, I mean, of our island. And I want to say that I respect the questions that have come up, the inquiry from our good retiring speaker from Mingilao, that there are some concerns, and how do we close those concerns? And I don't see the Attorney General's input here. I would love to see it. I do know that DOC wants to work this program, because we don't have to invent a system. We do know that the system is there. This program to returning those who violate and those who get adjudicated, there are programs that exist in other parts of the United States, and of course, our neighboring islands here in the Pacific. So for me, the take of possibly saving anywhere between $5 and $6.2 million, knowing that there's a $43 million deficit that our government has been preying upon our community, just saying that it's something that we have to take care of, of course, I would probably look at something like this first, before I tap into taking away the livelihoods of our community and the working relationships of our employees here on our island. I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that we get that $6.2 million circulated into the community. And I say $6.2 million because the author of the legislation said there was 543, 145 alone from FSM, and then on the other participating countries, there are maybe up to 178 prisoners at this time. With the total population right now, I want to say are in the 400s? 500, some. So if we can cut off and shave off a deficit within the government of Guam of 6.2, 5.2 or 6.2, I definitely want to look at it. But I also want to see if there was any talks, and maybe yield the question to the author, was there any talks about those who are deported or those who go back and serve their time back there? What rules do they have about those guys not returning to the island?
Do you yield, Senator?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Those are all great questions. The administration of the sentence that lies in the foreign country, within this, within this program, these are issues that have come up time and time again. And those are, and the concerns that you raised are extremely valid. And one thing that I wanted to point out is, for one thing, that one of the pluses of joining this particular program is that prior to any remove, prior to leaving the island or any transfer, that a removal order has to be in place, and that creates that flag that they have at the airport or at ports. And I just want to share one example, and to also answer the previous Senator's question. The Attorney General grants or denies the transfer request. Okay? And I'm going to take this from the materials that they had provided me. I won't claim to be an absolute expert, an attorney in this, but they pointed out, pointed out that even in a plea agreement, the request is still, has to be made to the U.S. Attorney's Office. So again, the AG grants or denies a transfer request. It's the International Prison Transfer Unit that is sitting under the Department of Justice that reviews the comments that were made by the U.S. Attorney's Office. And then they, you know, and they use that, they use, you know, that information to make their final decision. Let me just give you an example of, in Mexico. Mexico, again, their prison system probably is not up to par to California's per se. They limit the transfer approval to only those who are low-security concerns, first-time offenders, low to middle, low to middle socioeconomic status, no connection to any organized crime. And they also select those who have the, who, to reduce the likelihood of the return back to the guest country, like Guam, removal orders, again, are put forth. They limit the approval to those with strong family ties in their home country, and they have had either minimal or no prior criminal record. And anyway, so they've learned a lot of lessons from other arrangements with other countries. So we're going to inherit or adopt many of the policies that they've, that they've created to address the kind of concerns that you, that might, the previous speaker and the previous, previous speaker had mentioned.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, if I may, one more question, just based on what just based on what is submitted today. And I look at the program being initiated by the Department of Corrections, and then also with the support of the government of Guam, or the governor of Guam, and the Guam Parole Board, and then they shall designate a Guam decision-making authority for the program. Does, after the program is initiated, I would call it, I guess, the rules and regs or what have you of this program, would it have, would it come back to this body? It doesn't say it here, or would it be just implemented there?
It would be the implementation of the program.
Okay. Just wanted to know that. Mr. Speaker, I just want to say that I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak on this bill, and like I said earlier, based on what needs to be done and what needs to be streamlined. This may be something that I would love to hear what my other colleagues say before I make a final decision on my vote, if this gets to be put on the voting file. So sign him on, see for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Are there any other senators that wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Guthridge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm very encouraged by this bill. I think it's a good thing. I only have one question, and perhaps you can help with this one, because there's a legal aspect to it. Maybe the sponsor can also help with this. Since we're talking about arrangements with other jurisdictions, including what are actually defined as quote-unquote "foreign countries", such as Palau and the FSM, Marshall Islands, and of course, our sister non-contiguous area, which is the CNI. But for the foreign areas, can we enter into these agreements without any intercession by the U.S. State Department? Can we do this as a territory with a foreign jurisdiction?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Author Yild.
I yield to the question, however, I'm no expert. I don't believe I have an answer to that, whether we'd be able to create. Only, and the reason why, actually, why I do raise concern is because I know that if they're dealing with ports in and out, we're dealing with the federal, with the feds.
I don't agree so. Mr. Speaker, not to, I support the bill. And I'll vote for the bill. I'm just wondering if we may run into some problems trying to execute the intent, simply because of our status versus of dealing with foreign governments. So I don't know if anyone can help with that, but forward in case we need to address it in some way. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, could I have one minute recess, please?
Full recess. Senator Babinie, do you yield to the question that was posed by Dr. Guthridge?
Yes, thank you. The question that was raised actually deals with the fact that in this particular program, it falls under treaties among various countries, of which some of the countries are not represented, that we have represented here in our prison system. This particular program is administered through the Federal Department of Justice. And I would assume that they would have to work, you know, move forward and work with those countries directly, as opposed to Guam, working directly with, let's say, the country of the Philippines. So the answer is probably no.
Any other senator wish to be heard on this bill? Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. As I was listening, of course, to, you know, our colleagues actually bring up a lot of issues, I'm concerned, because I think there's still a lot of questions that are not really answered. I appreciated, of course, the comments provided by the sponsor, because I've written a note to myself here on the promulgating rules and regulations. And then, of course, reading, you know, further, then I saw on page five that they would establish the rules, regulations, and procedures, and that is fine. The author had also mentioned some other details that in terms of how this program really would work, but it's not even a part of this bill. And so, and I think that that's maybe some of the things that we're concerned about, is that the detailness of how this whole program is going to be set up. There's no clarity either in terms of, on page three, when we say that the Department of Corrections, in conjunction with Governor Guam and the Guam Parole Board, shall designate a Guam decision-making authority for the program. And the way I would read that, of course, is like, it's the Department of Education, I mean, Department of Corrections, and really, shall designate a Guam decision-making authority. And I'm just saying, so who are they, or who is, you know, this person? And do we want to leave it to just one person to make this decision? The Director of maybe Corrections? The members of the parole board? Somebody from the governor's office? That is still really not clear. And that, to me, has to be clear before, you know, of course, I hope, before this bill gets down to the third, I mean, to the voting file. The other also concern on page three that I have is on lines 10 and 11, where the Director of Department of Corrections, in conjunction, again, with the governor, shall appoint an administrator of the International Prisoner Transfer Program. And so the question, of course, with this is that, is this going to be a new individual, totally new to the government of Guam, a paid employee to the government, who now will be this administrator, that, you know, who has a list of duties and responsibilities? Or are we talking about maybe a division, or a unit, or a section, that eventually there will be then other employees that will be brought on then to carry out all of these duties? And, you know, we did hear the governor say is that he's not going to sign any bill that is going to then impact the government's finances, and especially in lieu, of course, of what he's saying, wanting to cut 43 million. Will this then be a new person to the government, or is it somebody within the Department of Corrections, so that then they'll have this as collateral duties? Although, when you read further on, thus placed upon the Department of Corrections Director to provide administrative and clerical support to administer this program, but in addition, then now DOC would have to come to the legislature to request for, you know, a budget to be able to support such a program. And the whole intent, of course, you know, really is good. And we've been talking about this, because how it's been affecting our community and affecting all of our social services, you know, in the government, and how monies are just not coming to be able to sustain, you know, this kind of program. I mean, the incarceration of these individuals, the financial impact to our police force, or social workers, and all that. Now, then it takes me to a discussion of these individuals, then, who once, of course, has been decided, you know, to do the transfer. Somehow, I get the feeling that, of course, both Guam would have to agree, and the country in which these individuals were turned to would have to agree to take them. That is definitely critical, and as voiced by previous speakers. And if you've traveled to the islands, and you see, of course, the state of their correction facilities, some, I'll tell you, the most, the country that right now has a penal system, a correctional system, and it's not even separated, where the youths are just like in one corner, and then the adults are another, and that's in Palau. And the prisoners, of course, can freely, you know, move around. I don't know, of course, whether maybe any one of them, those, the criminal ones that are, you know, violent, whether they're separated or not. But I've gone into the facility many times when I'm there, and to always support, you know, in terms of supporting the inmates or thereby purchasing some of the work that they have done, similar to what we have here, the industry, the prison industry that we have. I support that as well. But you go to other of the islands, and you see that they really don't have, they really, literally don't have a corrections facility. Now, this topic was also brought up in the Association of Pacific Island Legislatures, and I'm a member of that. And we have two members, two senators or representatives from the legislature from every one of these islands. And the subject, you know, comes up all the time. And it's a very sensitive subject when we talk about the FSM citizens and how they are financially impacting the government. And then the topic always is, you know, are you, do you have the facility to take them back and continue on until such time that their sentences have been met, that they've served the time required by the courts here? And the other is, do you have, are you willing to take them back? And for the most part, I know as much publicly, they, you know, they would not, of course, say that. But privately, many times in our discussions, is that they would admittedly say, they'll be very difficult, very difficult, one, to then incarcerate them, because they really don't have the facilities. And then, two, of course, they really can't, you know, remember, we talked about, again, that maybe some individuals who have any types of crimes already, that they, you know, a criminal record, that they cannot then actually leave, they'd be screened so that they don't leave and come here. But we all know, and we've read this in the papers, that we have actually, we've had an individual return and immediately changed, took his brother's name and identity, and, you know, we don't know the difference many times. They would come right back in. Unfortunately, one of them was caught right there at the point of entry, and the individual, you know, was sent back. But there are these individuals who have returned, and have returned, and then again, will be repeat offenders. And then, how do we do that? I mean, how do we safeguard that whatever it is, then, when they move forward with this program, that we're going to have this, you know, be able to kind of plug up all those gaps to make sure that, you know, this doesn't really, you know, happen again? And I'm just, you know, thinking that these islands, of course, these countries, that we really need to sit with them. we really need to sit with them, sort of to, short of having a treaty, so to speak, and I don't even know if that could happen, but more just an agreement, that these transfer of foreign nationals, that not only would the country then agree to take them back and then Guam willing, of course, to foot the bill to be able to transfer this individual. But there's one thing that I've been trying to find, where is that in the bill? But it also says that this is a requirement of a one-to-one transfer and that inmates must agree to be transferred. So if the country agrees to take him and we agree to send them, but now do we need the inmates to agree to be transferred? That, I think, needs to be answered. And then the other requirement, when it says a one-to-one transfer, just exactly what does that mean? When, in my mind, when I think one-to-one, is that we give you one and you give us one, that type of thing. But I don't think that that's the case because we don't have any of ours incarcerated, at least, I hope not, in any one of these, you know, countries. So I think we're going to be in the short end of the stick here if we're going to do this one-on-one? Or is it just one person at a time? One person per, you know, state or country? So, I mean, I didn't, you know, ask to, that, you know, the author, you know, yield to answer all these questions that maybe she can actually address this then maybe in her closing. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? If not, I'll invite the main sponsor to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In response to the previous speaker, just to clarify again, the decision-making authority really rests upon the, our Department of Justice and the negotiating countries as well as the person, and she is correct, that the, that not only do the receiving country and the sending country have to agree, but of course, the individual as well. And, you know, we shouldn't solely focus on the FSM. The reason why that number, why that is, is because they are the second-largest group that's sitting in our prison system. This also includes anybody state to state. And as far as the one-to-one, I'm not sure where in the bill did that point out, that I don't believe that's in any of the prerequisites or requirements that there has to be one-to-one transfer. So I hope that clarifies that. And I also wanted to point out that, again, that the Department of Justice has to approve of the transfer. But in closing, let me just point out again that there are obvious financial benefits to our island and there are all, and there are other social issues that we have to consider. And yes, we do have to be sensitive about their needs because honestly, this treaty was also created for the purpose of being able to provide better rehabilitative processes for the detainees or the prisoners. It has its diplomatic benefits. Local benefits, obviously, again, has been, you know, the reduced administrative burden, less tension in our prison system, less numbers of detainees and inmates, and of course, the less, the lower cost of imprisonment. If, in fact, one person in our prison system costs about $35,000 a year, just one person going back to their home country to serve out their term is a big relief to our cost, our budget problems here on island. Now, as far as the process, I did want to point out again, the judicial, excuse me, the Justice Department will work with the Attorney General's Office. They have their criminal division, they have their Office of Internal Operations, and then they have their International Prison Transfer Unit that would be working with our Bureau of Prison, our local prison system, as well as the prison system in the receiving country. This bill helps fill in the gaps that we currently have as far as how we can help those go back and have rehabilitative ways of, you know, in serving out their term. If we don't do this, I mean, it would behoove us to do this. We don't do this or pass this bill, we again bypass the possibility of being part of this international treaties. So I urge and I encourage my colleagues to please support Bill 30631. It would just include us in a process that is already existing that our neighbors up north, CNMI, is participating in, Palau's participating in it, and of course, all of the United States and many, many other countries, over 80 countries, I believe. And this would, we would at least be able to avail to this federal program that is readily available to us, no cost to us, outside of, of course, the internal admin, administrative responsibilities to carry out this program. So, and I ask if I could move to accept, excuse me, if I could move to have Bill 30631, be moved to the voting file.
On the motion then to send Bill 306 to the voting file without any objections, so ordered. We're in substitute bill number 315-31, and the author is Senator Yamashita. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask that bill number 315-31, substituted by the Committee on Education and Public Libraries, be moved to the third reading file, and I ask to be able to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, bill number 315-31 is an act that would require the Guam Department of Education to continually update a 10-year capital improvement project plan and to identify funding sources for the projects. And we're calling this act the Teaching and Learning Communities Act. Madam Speaker, you very well know, as do the other members of our body, know that our schools throughout our island have their challenges. We have 27 elementary schools, eight middle, five high, and one that's identified as an alternative school. A majority of these schools, 24 of them, elementary, middle, and high, are either 40, 50, or 60 years old. There can be a lot to be said for having a historically preserved facility. There's a lot to be said about that. But unfortunately, many of these facilities have not been appropriately maintained, which is why we go around and we hear our schools, our families, our kids, our teachers talking about the need for air conditioners, need for bigger classrooms, the need for better parking lots, the need for athletic areas, the need for library space, the need for, to stop the leaking facilities, the need to have fine arts buildings, the need for pools or the need for a football field. We hear it all the time. And while it has been opined that this is really something that the Board of Education should do, I don't disagree with that. But I do suggest that on our island, that is all of 30 miles long and maybe four miles wide, that we all help each other. And when we see that something isn't being done, that we will step up within our realm of authority and help. This measures an attempt to help the Board of Education, who was represented at the public hearing, who said that they supported it and didn't support it at the same time because they believed that they were already working on this. But since that time, Madam Speaker, we haven't seen any progress. And I think that as we welcome our incoming superintendent, I believe that this along with many other issues, that there is a sense of hope to get the business addressed and the business completed. But that being said, I still think it's a good measure to put into public policy to say that our public school system that builds the future of all of us, most specifically our 31,000 students, shall have a safe and secure facility all around where they don't have to worry about enough space, where they don't have to worry about broken ceilings, where they can focus on teaching and learning. This bill proposes that the Department of Education Capital Improvement Plan will provide a management tool and a guide to identify the most practical and economic means of providing safe teaching and learning environments, justification and guidance preparing annual capital improvement project design and construction budgets, and outline for anticipated changes in terms of major facilities, population needs, associated demands, and indicators of future facility costs for financial planning and decision-making. Madam Speaker, over and over again, we've talked many times about the need for planning, for good planning, for meaningful planning, for relevant planning. The feature of this would be ensuring that our attendance needs, our attendance areas are always looked at every 10 years. And we know that right now in the north, we have a majority of our students, but we also know that in the central part of our island, it's growing there, which means then we need to make sure that we have enough classroom space all around. It is a dream of mine that eventually Timuning would actually have a middle school. Right now, we still go to PD, which is fine. Rius Middle has always welcomed us. But it surely would be nice if Timuning had their own middle school and they can go straight into John F. Kennedy High School. But right now, that isn't to happen. But what I do think, I do know that the current Board of Education has a committee in place and they are looking at attendance areas. I've heard some of those plans, and I think that's great. I think this can give statutory strength to that plan. This can, as we move in and others move over, we can keep this planning mechanism in place, and we will know that every 10 years, we need to energize the plan, we need to update it, we need to see where we are, we need to see where the voids are, and this can guide decisions. So with that, Madam Speaker, I look forward to the deliberation by the body to make this even better. This does address issues such as eco-friendly aspects, energy-efficient aspects, really, which are 21st century ideas. But basically, it just talks about ensuring that our 30, 31,000 students are provided facilities in a safe manner and that it's planned for and provided for and not as a cry for help. You are the one, you and your colleagues are the ones who answered the cry for John F. Kennedy High School. You're the ones who said, yes, we will help, and you did. I would hope that from here on out, that we are able to do that before the community stands up and says, look at our school. And so right now, we get the plan in place to help our GW Gecko's, our Ocean View, Ocean View Middle Facility, FBLG. Madam Speaker, you know better than I these facilities and where the holes are. And so this is simply a measure to put into place to say, these are the areas, these are the issues, this is the plan, and we will support the Board of Education as it moves forward. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, there being none, on the motion then to send Bill 315 to the voting file without any objections, so ordered. Resolution 330, Century Special. So that would stay still then on the agenda. Vice Speaker, if you have to cover for me then for my resolution. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Resolution 358 in the third reading file, and I would like to just briefly discuss it.
Any objection placing 358 in the third reading file? There being none, you're recognized, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Resolution 358 really is to urge the United States Congress and the President of the United States to continue in their efforts in calling upon the government of the Islamic Republic of Iran to ensure that their nation's youth will not be denied access to higher education because of their faith. For those who don't know much about the Baha'i faith, I'm not going to go into that, but I mean, it's truly, its origins really is in Iran. And it's so unfortunate that the individuals, the youth in particular, of course, are being denied an opportunity to get an education. One of their teachings that they are very committed to, and that is to strive for individual spiritual maturity, of course, and participate collectively also for a prosperous society and to contribute to the common well-being of individuals. There's about 5 billion members, you know, throughout the world, and they, and one of the things that has been happening to the youth and even individuals who participate in the educational, education of the youth have been incarcerated, have been, of course, under a close watch, they have shut down all of their educational institutions, and that families, professors, and would actually have to resort to going to private homes to try to continue and conducting, of course, the education of the children. People have been, they have confiscated all of their books, they have confiscated private property of businessmen, they have harassed them, they have imprisoned them, tortured them, and in some cases, executed these individuals. And so what this whole resolution is doing, because, you know, we enjoy, of course, the freedom, you know, not just to practice, you see, our faith, but, you know, we all know is that we have compulsory education here for our children, and the emphasis always has been educating our youth and not just our youth, you know, it goes as far up as, you know, the higher institutions like the university. And by the same token, the Baha'is themselves as well have been, of course, promoting this, teaching their children, their youth. But because of that, they think there's this whole idea that these individuals then are committing or are being charged with crimes against humanities. And that's why then professors and all those Baha'is who are supportive of this as well is that they have been in prison. They feel that, well, the Iranian government has actually charged them as well of spreading corruption on earth. And it's so unfortunate that in this day and age that, you know, anyone would use, of course, you know, religion as a way to say that they are, you know, behaving against, you know, a government is just, you know, so, of course, unfortunate. So what this resolution is asking on behalf of the people of Guam, of course, is to urge the United States Congress and the President to call upon the Republic of Iran to ensure that they, these youth not be denied access to the best and most useful higher education because of their faith. So I hope our colleagues will support this. I know there was a question asked at one time about why is the legislature even involving itself in this? And I think it's, and we've done this for others as well. I know Senator Guthridge has been very active in supporting other groups as well, recognizing them, having a day in which we can, you know, give tribute to some of these organizations. And I think it's, again, because of just who we are, you know, as a people and how we support others in their efforts, and especially with education, that, you know, we do not want to infringe on them and deny them that education. This will be sent out to, not just, like I say, to the President and the Congress, but including Hillary Clinton, the Secretary of State, to the Honorable Elena Ross Lithnen, the Chairperson of the U.S. Committee on Foreign Affairs, to John Kerry, the Chairman of the U.S. Senate in Foreign Affairs, but also to Ms. Bonnie DeGaulle from New York, who is the principal representative of the Baha'i International Community. who is the Principal Representative of the Baha'i International Community to the United Nations, and also to Ms. Barbara Jameson, Secretary of the National Spiritual Assembly of the Baha'is of the Marianas Islands, and, of course, to the Governor of Guam. So I hope our colleagues will support this resolution to, you know, hope that, you know, they, the government would allow then the youths to get an education. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Any other Senator wish to be heard on the resolutions? Dr. Guthers, Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Of course, I rise to support the resolution. I just want to share with our colleagues and the public that, you know, Guam, in Guam, we have a very diverse community. And we have a lot of, frankly, we have a lot of folks born in Iran that were able to leave their country in order to be able to practice their faith and live in freedom. And some of our Iranian friends have located themselves here on Guam. Many of them are professional folks, quite a few are up at the university in the sciences, teaching our residents. And some of them are in other professions in the community. And they also have established religious outlets on the island that some of you are familiar with. And they have members from the community who are not originally from Iran. But these folks are part of our community. And, of course, their advocacy and their hope is that their country will be free one day so that all people in Iran can practice their faith without retribution or mistreatment. And if you look at the history of the world, you know that people who followed other religions in history, even up till current history, have also been persecuted for their faith and their beliefs. And in our country, in our great nation, we have always stood up to fight that kind of oppression. So if we in our little island community can do anything to help in this goal, to promote religious freedom and the lives of people lived in ways where they are not under threat from the state that they live in, then we must do that. And I think this resolution intends to do that. It may be a small voice coming from Guam, but I think it's a very important voice that we lend to this cause. And I want to say that we welcome our residents on Guam who left their nation and were fortunate to be able to do so in order to practice their faith and live in freedom. They are a very important part of our island community. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? There being none, so the motion then to send Bill, I mean, Resolution 358 to the third, I mean, voting file without any objections, ordered. Resolution number 330, recognized, Senator Rispisho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Resolution 330 be placed in the voting file with some brief discussion.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, dear colleagues. This resolution seeks to request the Honorable Malin Zebredalio to advocate for an adjustment of the schedule of fees charged by the U.S. consulate in the Republic of the Philippines for B1 and B2 visas, and to also formally requesting the same from the U.S. Department of State. Now, this resolution did have a public hearing, Madam Speaker, and at this time is certainly eligible for the body's consideration. But I want to say that the genesis of this resolution resulted when Senator Guthers and I had a meeting with the U.S. Ambassador in the Philippines, Mr. Thomas, following up on the status of the Philippine visa waiver program. And we said, "If we can't get the Philippine visa waiver right now, maybe a Guam-only visa waiver as an interim status." And we were told that the, that the, that the whole effort for the Philippine visa waiver is, is, there's a correlation between that and the denial rate. And then, when Senator Guthers and I had the privilege of being in Pangasinan, where we met with the governor, the vice-governor, and the provincial board, after that session, Madam Speaker, we interacted with the media, and members of the media asked us, "What do we think the status was?" And so, when we reported what we knew all along, that the, that the effort to obtain a Philippine visa waiver program for the Philippines and the United States, it was attached to the denial rate. Then we learned that the Filipinos, and foreigners for that matter, Madam Speaker, who apply for a visa, they pay $140 whether they approved or denied. And so, our suggestion was made at that time that we petitioned our Congresswoman to ask the State Department to adjust their policy where they get charged only upon approval. And I think that's fair. Senator Guthers thinks that's fair. Senator Tom Adda thinks that's fair as well as co-sponsors this resolution. And I, I hope that this body thinks that's fair, because it doesn't make any sense to be charging anyone for, for a fee when that application has been denied. And if they, if the U.S. Embassy wants to set a nominal fee for processing, that's certainly something that they can do, but they shouldn't charge the same fee for an application whether it's approved or denied. And that's, that's what this resolution would do. I'm happy to report to this body that the Philippine Council General is certainly excited about something like this. It's a, it's a recognition, Guam's recognition of the contributions that the Filipino people have made to the island of Guam immediately following World War II, where they helped us rebuild our island after World War II, and they continue to do that. And so, this resolution also, Madam Speaker, reflects the wonderful relationship we have with the, with the people of the Philippines, and it shows that we're willing to stand up whenever our intervention is required to seek, to make sure that justice is served. And this is one fine example of that. So I ask for the body's consideration in the adoption and passage of Resolution 330. And I thank you for the opportunity to, to present this.
So on the motion then to send Resolution 330 to the voting file without any objections, ordered. Senator Rispisho, you recognize in Resolution 369?
Madam Speaker, I move that Resolution 369 be placed in the voting file with some brief discussion.
You'd like to briefly discuss it?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. This resolution also had a public hearing, and it requests the Congresswoman Malin Bredalio to secure authorization and funding for a United States Department of Labor Job Corps Center here on Guam. And what we learned in researching this initiative, Madam Speaker, is that there are many job corps programs throughout the United States and even the other territories, but yet this same program is not extended here on Guam. And so, we, we brought this up with the Congresswoman and her staff, and she certainly can't wait to formally receive this resolution, and it would be something that would be required of her in order to petition that this program be extended here. And this program helps young people ages 16 through 24 to improve their quality of life by having vocational and academic training here on the island in a safe, drug-free environment, and where they can take advantage of those kinds of resources. And so, when we introduced this resolution, Madam Speaker, some people thought that the local Department of Labor and AHRD are doing something like this. And so, for the record, I want to say that they're not, but both agencies certainly showed up at the public hearing and expressed their support for something like this. If you recall what the AHRD Director, Alfredo Antolin, said, "We're sending Guam, we're sending Guam's young adults to participate in the Job Corps Center in Hawaii." And so, if we're having to send our own young people to another job corps program somewhere else, then certainly, why can't we do something like that here? And so, this resolution will provide that first step to, to even exploring the idea of having something like this here on Guam. And so, I ask the body's consideration in adopting this resolution.
On the motion then to send Resolution 369 to the voting file without any objections, ordered. Resolution number 370, Senator Rispisho, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I don't usually introduce resolutions, but it just so happens that the...
Three.
Somebody, just so happened that the timing was right to do certain resolutions, and this next Resolution 370, I move that it be placed in the voting file with some consideration.
Please proceed, Senator.
Some discussion, rather. Madam Speaker, so Resolution 370 again gives another assignment to Congresswoman Malin Bredalio to express to members of Congress to ensure that the federal Medicare, Medicaid, and food stamp program all be fully funded and adequately funded in the fiscal year 2013 federal budget, and that the budget be maintained at current levels of coverage for children, seniors, the ill, the disabled, and individuals of limited means for the 50 states and all insular areas of the United States. I'm, I'm pleased that the Calvo administration has put their finger on this, on this problem that, that's really been talked about in Congress, in the House, and from what we can gather, Madam Speaker, it's likely not to pass in the Senate, because the Senate is democratically controlled. And it's the House where we have a problem with in trying to convey two members of Congress that are doing something like this, Madam Speaker, where we already have to provide for those citizens who are covered under FAS. If they cut funding to these programs and we still provide those services, it would just have a devastating effect to our local budget. But not only that, this is one program that attacks the most needy of all communities, and that's the, the group that I had mentioned, and I, I'm happy that the administration, like I said, is, is stepping up its efforts to convey their support, and maybe, maybe they're doing that because of this resolution being on the agenda. But for whatever reason, they are participating in wanting to say that the Ryan Plan would not work for anyone in the United States or even Guam who are currently receiving these benefits. Really, it's just, it just doesn't, doesn't sit well with me and other members of this legislature. I'm happy that Senator Tom Adda has co-sponsored this resolution, Madam Speaker, and I'm hopeful that this resolution can also get the support, and this is something that Governor Calvo, I'm sure, can take with him as he meets with members of Congress, as we meet with members of Congress. And it's, because it's a federal-territorial issue, it's also something that you and I can bring up in the Guam First Commission, and we have one, one approach, one Guam voice to express our concern with this particular issue. So I thank you for the opportunity to present on this resolution. I move that it be placed in the voting file.
On the motion to send 370 to the voting file without any objections, ordered.
Next bill on the agenda is Bill 371, authored by Senator Panglinen, but I understand, Madam Speaker, you'll be presenting.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. On behalf of the Chair of the Committee on Lands and Office of Finance and Budget, and as his acting Chair now, I would like to place Bill 371, there's 31, on the third reading file, and I'd just like to briefly explain what it is.
Any objection to placing 371 in the reading file?
It's, I know, it seems ironic, of course, that I should be the one doing this on behalf of Speaker Panglinen, but it's a one-page bill, and I'm very happy that the Speaker Panglinen has actually included the maps, because that's one of the, you know, requests that I always have when I review any land bill for rezoning of any lands. What this is, is to rezone Lot Number 19A-3 in the municipality of Sinehania from a single-family dwelling, which is R1, to a multiple-family dwelling, R2. And if you, of course, are able to, to look at the map, I don't know if you all have a copy, but in this particular area, if you look in Sinehania, of course, is that it's, how should I say, there's Route 7 and Senator Gibson Highway, and the circle area, there is Lot Number 19A. So this is for the family who, you know, are living there, and, you know, customary, what families do is that when there are more than one individual, family members, of course, there's that then, you want to be able then to provide for your, you know, children or other family members. So it's a fairly simple bill, and then, of course, you know the requirements by law that Senator Panglinen had, is that any rezoning, there is that requirement to put out a four-by-eight sign, you know, on, you know, the property as well for others to recognize and know. So that's it. So I ask our colleagues to consider, of course, Bill 371.
Thank you. Senator Doinz.
Yeah, at this time, I just wanted to ask if the representative of the author would yield to a point of information on whether or not this bill has a report from Department of Land Management as required by law? It just wasn't attached to the bill, Mr. Chair.
In the committee report, there is a letter dated December the 9th, 2011. I'll have her read the part as it relates to 371.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, then that's in compliance with the report from Land Management in terms of, for the bill to actually be placed on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can you pass this to her? Do you have it?
There is a, a letter from Monty Mesa, and, and he did submit that the department is, the department's uncertainty as to the location of a partial being proposed for zone change is this basic, he was asking some questions. So he did respond. The lot has been subdivided 12 times already and is historical. Therefore, until the department can determine the exact location, then the department recommends that they send them a proper advice on land use development opportunities, and that, I mean, so the requirement, of course, for them to respond has been complied with. The office, of course, the committee has also solicited comments again from the mayor, and the mayor of Sinehania also responded, and they are in support of it. The other is, let me see, Water Works also responded, and what, more, a little bit more information on the property, of course, is that this, the residence is a, is currently a duplex. So it is a multi-residential complex, but it's still under R1, which makes it really non-conforming. And so, by doing this, it would make them in compliance, and more importantly is that in order for them to be able to go to a financial institution... is that in order for them to be able to go to a financial institution, they are saying currently they will not finance it unless they're able to get this property then to conform. So, and that's the whole purpose then of, you know, doing this because it's currently not -- it's currently there's a duplex in the property, and in order to make it then in compliance is that here's the requirement of requesting to make it R2, to meet exactly, you know, the --
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would say at this time that I would request the Committee on Rules to go ahead and I would check with the Committee on Rules to see if this has met the requirement. And one of the reasons why I also bring up the point of inquiry and order, Mr. Chair, is that this type of rezoning can actually be done under the director's signature, and it's probably why, I don't know if that's a report or a request to the author or committee, it sounds more of a question in terms of the way Land Management has framed their discussion in the letter there, so I would, more than a report actually from them. So I would ask that we be able to verify that, and also to check with Land Management as this is something they can do under their signature.
So --
Thank you.
Okay. Well, one more note, and I think that, because, you know, I have a piece of property as well in Sinahania, and this is pre-urban renewal, and in the past, prior to it being sectioned off for Sinahania and the Ganai Heights, there is that boundary that, you know, you could very well say you're from Sinahania, and then you can say you're from Ganai Heights, and individuals had those duplexes prior to urban renewal, but they were never really zoned as R2, and here now, of course, we're finding that this family, this particular family, are in that situation that when they went to finally get refinancing, is that because of that non-compliance of the zoning, that they would not be able to refinance. And I know that this has actually come to the legislature many times, to be able to deal with properties such as this, to bring it into compliance so that they'll be able then to make, you know, a loan. And so, and I wouldn't mind, so long as you don't lose its position here on the agenda, and I will then, we'll have the office contact the Department of Land Management for more information. So if we may can, you know, just kind of leave it on the agenda then.
We'll put an asterisk next to it, and we'll come back to it, and before it's moved down, all right, to the voting file. We'll hold it in third pending. Second. All right, thank you. Then the next bill on the agenda is Bill 404. Senator Duñez.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I respectfully request that 404 be placed in the, at the bottom of the agenda. As was discussed by the Majority Leader this morning, there is a submission of a bill by the Governor with regard to election reform. It was not inclusive of my concerns and my fellow Republicans' concerns on the issue of the independent candidate because of the fact that I have a bill, and I asked, purposely asked, for it to see if my standalone bill would go forward. So there are some opportunities to possibly enjoin, so I respectfully request that we put 404 at the bottom of the agenda until --
Any objection? Hearing none.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
The next two bills are Senator Rodriguez's, and following that, Senator Winia Barnes. Madam Speaker, do you wish to speak on Bill 412? Your bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 412-31COR on the third reading file, and I'd like to briefly discuss it, and it's a bill that's been amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary.
On the motion to accept and to place it, there being no objection.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, many years ago, before our sessions or legislatures ago, that we passed into law, of course, a bill called CAPE, which are volunteers who are assisting the Department of Public Safety in patrolling or doing some of the minor responsibilities that could be done by volunteers who, so that then the officers themselves can go after, of course, any crimes that are being committed in the community. This program, CAPE, of course, is a very successful program, and it started out in the beginning that these individuals were, are volunteers, would actually go out and cite individuals who are parking, illegally parking at, you know, these parking stalls for persons with a disability. It's been a very successful program, and I would like to add, though, is that the requirement by law is that these individuals must go through a training, and so that they will be able to learn to handle individuals who may become, you know, irate or violent. They're not supposed to, you know, arrest anyone or apprehend anyone, but more just to give citations. In addition to that, because of their success, their responsibilities have been increased to also include giving littering, litter citations. That normally, you know, is done by, yes, our police officers and by the Environmental Protection Agency, but not, but they haven't been, you know, that successful, I mean, both of the Public Safety and EPA going after individuals who've been littering in our island and in our roads and everywhere. So again, the CAPE volunteers stepped up to the plate, and that's exactly what they've been doing. The citations that they give when it goes to court, so then you can challenge it, but the money then that's collected from this actually goes into this program to help in the training and the purchasing of more citation books, badges for them, a CAPE, well, I mean, a vest, so to speak, to identify them, and so it's been very successful. We, because of their success, I know there was legislation, again authored by the Chairman for Public Safety, had, you know, taken 50% of that to assist a dissident as well in their operations, and 50% now remains with the police. So the third now additional duties that we're giving to the CAPE volunteers is to assist by patrolling the schools. So what it is, is that because there's been so many vandalism happening at our schools, and especially at the late hours, in our roundtable meeting with DOE and GPD, they basically said that the hours in which our schools are being burglarized and vandalized are always, you know, in the late hours of the evening and very early hours in the morning, and, you know, naturally, the number of police officers that we have patrolling the island are so limited, and these individuals, again, have stepped up to the plate and say that they are willing to do just that. They are not to arrest, of course, again, or apprehend, but to call for assistance if a crime is actually being committed at that time. So what this would do then is that the Chief of Police then is authorized, again, to recruit additional volunteers to assist the Guam police with other things besides roaming the communities, but to also assist with traffic direction and crowd control. The volunteers also then will receive a certificate from the Chief of Police demonstrating the completion of their course requirement and training, and then the funding to be able to do this, to cover the training and the support, again, will be done, the monies will come from the collections of those tickets. And by the way, in CAPE is the Community Assisted Policing Effort. Oh, wait a minute, I just realized something here. Can I take a brief recess, Mr. Speaker? Thank you.
Legislature's back in session. Madam Speaker, you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I know that originally we were saying that we want to just kind of keep a certain bill in its place, but I think maybe what I need to do at this time is to go ahead and make the motion then to send 371 back to the committee, and then I'll be able to get, you know, some answers before we --
Thank you very much. Any objection to sending 371 back to committee? I think the committee -- Senator Espio, you recognize on your bill as amended by the sponsor. Resolution 330.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, and not withstanding the House rules, I move that we move Resolution 330 from the voting file back to the top of the second reading file. I have to move a different version.
An amended version has been circulated.
Correct.
Okay. On the motion to go back to, you wanted to go back up?
Yeah.
Any objection? Hearing no objection.
So, Mr. Speaker, the version that I moved to adopt is, it says Resolution 330 as amended by the sponsor, and the difference with the original version versus the amended one takes up suggestion made at a public hearing to also encourage the Department of State to adopt standardized policies relative to the issuance of B1 and B2 visas with all nations with which the United States maintains a security agreement, such as that which exists between the United States and the Republic of the Philippines, and so if they went and did this, this would also be a benefit and help achieve the efforts as expressed in Resolution 330, and so it's beyond the technical amendment, and so I wanted to bring this back before the body so we can adopt this version instead.
Thank you. So the amended version has an amendment in the title and also one additional whereas. Any senator wishes to be heard on the resolution? Any objection to the resolution being accepted and as amended? Any objection to the resolution being sent to the voting file as amended? The legislature will now stand in recess until nine o'clock tomorrow morning.